I'd like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. Pursuant school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication, school board member Diane Rostin of the New Yawsko district will participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. A motion is ordered for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Ms. Jackson? I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Ms. Jackson?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Rostin?
Yes.
Yes on the vote? Okay, thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Dr. Latif, motion passed.
Thank you. Two, motion to enter closed session. Moving to the motion to enter a closed session, a motion is in order.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the resignation, performance, appointment, and release of specific employees, and to receive advice on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 1 and 8. Two, to review and take action on disciplinary appeals for individual students as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 2 and 8. Three, to consult with division counsel and receive advice on legal matters requiring the advice of counsel and/or pertaining to actual or probable litigation as provided by Virginia Section, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 1, 2, 7, and 8. Four, to discuss with staff and division counsel regarding legal requirements specific to the pandemic which require legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 8. And five, to consult with division counsel and discuss with staff the acquisition or disposition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 3, and 8.
Madam Chair?
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Austin?
Finally, yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Dr. Latif, motion passed.
Thank you. The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session, and we return to open session in one hour. session. Eight, a motion is in order.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Madam Chair? Vice Chair, excuse me.
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, that's me.
Closed session certification.
The topic page.
We have to certify. So it was page before, on page two, at the bottom of page two, Mrs. Argarpur.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Number eight.
Just kidding. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of February 16, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and, two, only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Madam Vice Chair?
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Ms. Rostin?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Latif, motion passed.
Ms. Jackson? I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Ms. Chair?
Ms. Jessie?
Hi. Ms. Rostin, your vote, please.
I didn't hear that. Yes.
Okay.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Dr. Latif, motion passed.
Eight, nine, 102, approval of the SMA PD recommendation for long-term suspension. I need a motion.
Ms. Jackson, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve that, for the reasons set forth in the SMA PD's letter of January 20, 2022, the Prince William County School Board approves staff's recommendation for the long-term suspension of student HS22-066 through January 27, 2022, the end of the first semester of the 2122 school year, and that the school board also approve SMA PD's recommendation for the student's return to school, any non-traditional education eligibility determination contained in the SMA PD letter, the student's placement at the time of his/her return to school if recommended by SMA PD, and SMA PD's recommendation, if any, regarding eligibility for computer-based instruction while on long-term suspension.
I second. Thank you. Ms. Rostin?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Dr. Latif, motion passed.
Thank you. Before moving on to the public hearing, I would like to point out that this week is Virginia School Board Cloak Appreciation Week. On behalf of the entire school board, I'd like to express my gratitude for Board Clerk B. Simpson and Deputy Clerk Brandy Reeves for their amazing and selfless service to our school division and community. The board appreciates your hard work and support, so thank you. I declare that a public hearing is now open on the subject of the school board's fiscal year 2023 proposed budget/CIP. Any citizen who has signed up in advance to speak on this subject may do so when called upon. Citizens will have three minutes to speak and are limited to speaking on the topic at the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget CIP. Please use proper decorum. There are nine citizens signed up to speak at the public hearing this evening. I recall the first four speakers up to the front row. Please take a seat in the front row and come up to the podium when you hear your name is called. For any speakers who are signed up to speak who are seated in the atrium, please proceed to the open entrance to the public meeting room, and you will be directed to the front. So the first four speakers I have on the budget are, and I apologize if I mispronounce
Jennifer Rakowski. Hi. Sorry, we're working on audio out there. All right. Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Jennifer Rakowski, and I reside in the Okaquan district. Supporting our students means investing in our staff. One of our strategic priorities is to provide regionally competitive wages, and this budget invests $61 million to provide teachers and staff a 4.2% cost of living adjustment and a step increase, resulting in an average pay increase of 7% for most employees. The 7% raise is what was promised to many of us as an automatic and annual increase when we were hired by Prince William County. The steps were supposed to be tied directly to our years of service, with cost of living increases given whenever the federal government recommends it. When the Great Recession hit over 10 years ago, teachers were asked to help sacrifice for the locality by freezing steps, foregoing their COLA and paying for more out-of-pocket. The county has recovered. It's time to show our teachers, specialists, support staff, and central office staff that we have appreciated their sacrifice and their current service to our students and community. We can all agree that Northern Virginia is more expensive than the counties surrounding us to the south. In fact, the current Prince William County cost of living is over 26% above the national average. We can also agree that having staff living in the area that they, in the area that they work, helps build community and builds for better staff morale. However, our average starting teacher salary is still over $15,000 below the national average. Average rent in Manassas, Virginia is over $1,500, almost the entire monthly salary of a new employee. U.S. inflation calculators show 7.5%. This is the COLA that is being recommended by Social Service Administration. A 7% salary increase, a step plus a small COLA, won't cover it. In reality, it should be a 7% COLA plus the step for that employee's, the employment scale. If you want, excuse me, educators are quitting the profession altogether. News reports show that teacher prep classes are at all-time low for enrollment. The same can be said for our education support professionals, which we've seen through bus driver shortages and our difficulty finding TAs and other staff. The high-intensity tutoring that was proposed seemed like a great start for helping our students build their academic skills. However, many of my colleagues and teacher friends report that they're just too overwhelmed and overworked to give up their planning to do it or offer times outside of contract hours, and they've been unable to find qualified and willing participants for parent volunteers, community members, or retired teachers. If you want to recruit and retain the best, put the money up towards salaries. Those staff members who have been in the county for years and have missed steps, let's elevate them to the step we should be on if the steps weren't skipped. Let's do a 7% to 8% COLA to cover the rest of inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berger, Ashley Berger. All right, we can come back. Elaine Deveraux.
I'm Aleen Deveraux, and I'm a parent from the Gainesville district. I stand before you to express unwavering support for the superintendent's proposed FY23 budget. We say as parents it's important to advocate for our children. Well, I agree. So let's support a budget that identifies 35 new parent liaisons, provides 100 new kindergarten assistants, 100 special education assistants, and a assistant principal for each middle school. All schools will now have a full-time gifted education teacher that doesn't just support gifted education students, but all children through outreach. And there's been valid concerns about school safety, so let's fund a budget that provides 30 security assistants for secondary schools, as all as security cameras and radios. And as a three-year member of the No Place for Hate Committee, I appreciate the additional funding to ensure that we provide inclusive and safer schools. And this budget provides pay raises for our deserving teachers that have weathered a pandemic, new technology just to teach our children. Now, next month is Equity in Education Month, and we as community members should want each child to be the best or he or she can be. But we should recognize that that process does not take away from the development or trajectory of our own children. It does not. Investing in our community's children only make us faster, stronger, smarter, better. Think of a garden. Some flowers and plants need sunlight, while others need shade to thrive. Some may need more water. Some may need weeding, fertilizer, and pruning to thrive. But we never deny the plants what they need to grow. In our yards, we meet our plants and flowers based on their needs. Why should our blessed children be any less? The budget is a commitment to 89,000 children, to make them a priority because we want them to be successful. We have the ability, we have the resources to serve all children, from Okaquan to Woodbridge, and of course, Gainesville. We just need to do what is decent, not extraordinary, just what is decent. However, there are those among us that want to sow confusion, and ultimately, they want us to cut off our noses in spite of our faces. There are people who would rather underinvest, disinvest in our future generation, our children, that one day will be in charge. While I'm not with that, when the time comes, I want the younger people to know how to read, write, think critically, and so on. Our children are watching us, and they're watching you. They want us to put our energy in supporting, bettering our schools, partnering with our teachers and staff, not getting bogged down in nonsense. Remember the Gospel of Luke, Chapter 10, verses 25 and 37, the good Samaritan. Who is thy neighbor? It is not based on race, class, economic status, primary language spoken at home, learning ability, and not even district, and definitely not masking. Parents and board members, you have 89,000 neighbors, precious children that are depending on you to support this budget. Thank you.
Stephen Lorenz. I'm going to call the next, and then come back to those who weren't here for it. So Kenneth Nar, Ali Iman, Maggie Hansford, John D. Crown, James Carter Wiley. And I'll come back to Kenneth Nar.
My name's Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file with the clerk. Thank you, Superintendent McDade, and school board members. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the budget. Our students remain our number-one priority, knowing that our greatest impact for each student is to fund our classrooms. This means adequate resources and staffing to make this possible. Our educators deserve a livable wage, the ability to work and live here, and plan adequately for retirement. We need to address this year's compensation, along with the pay scale adjustment required to address compression wages, which means when employees are stagnant on the pay scale, when new employees are receiving higher starting salaries. An annual raise allows for our employees to provide their families financially with daily living costs. Consistent movement on the pay scale ensures a pathway to retirement. We need to make sure our compensation package addresses recruitment and retention, and I believe that this budget does that. A livable wage is crucial for retention of our educators during a nationwide teacher shortage. We want our public servants to live and work here. Our educators build trust in our community by raising their families here and building meaningful relationships. They shop at our local businesses, buy a home, and pay taxes here. I appreciate Dr. McDade for your tremendous efforts during this first year and the strategic plan. I also thank the board for your continued focus on ensuring our students receive a world-class education. I'm confident that this budget will reflect our community's priorities, and for that, I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hansford. John D. Crown, or James Carter Wiley. I'm just going to name them again, and then we'll move on. Ashley Berger. Stephen Lorenz. Kenneth Nar. Ali Iman. John D. Crown. James Carter Wiley. We will, as being there, not present, and there are no other citizens signed up to speak on this subject, I declare the public hearing closed. I'd like now to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you mind leading us today?
(Inaudible) of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible,
1401, approval of the public meeting agenda. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
I second.
Ms. Zargarpur seconds, thank you. Ms. Rostin, do you have a vote?
Yes.
Dr. Latif, motion passed.
Thank you. Adoption of the consent agenda. Motion, yes, ma'am. The motion is in order.
Thanks. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Are there any discussion? Ms. Wall?
I second.
Okay, Ms. Wall.
I wanted to speak to one item on the, on the consent agenda. I wanted to speak to item 14.03. So while I continue to have concerns about how equity initiatives will be implemented, and in the past have warned and continue to voice concerns about the potential for government overreach in our implementation, I, however, support equity in the broadest sense, especially as it relates to best practices for fairness and opportunity for all students, and as it helps us identify and meet the individual academic needs of each and every student. So I wanted to point out that in September 2016, in an initiative that had broad support countywide, Gainesville district predecessor on the board, Ms. Satterwhite, along with Mr. Deutsch from Coles District, and other board members across the county voted to, quote, "add commitment to equity" to the title of Policy 060, so that the policy was renamed Non-Discrimination and Commitment to Equity. It's strictly in this sense that I support continuing the work envisioned by that board, my predecessor, Ms. Satterwhite, and other former board members, who unanimously joined with several current members of this board to establish the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity back in 2019, and who each appointed representatives to that Equity Council. During my brief time on the board, I have strived to stay true to that vision, and I continued that tradition by, continued that tradition by appointing my own representative to that Equity Council, Mr. Justin Kane, who serves on that committee and helps oversee the division's equity efforts to support each and every student in their goals. So with that same approach to equity that we're talking about here, and for these reasons, I think it's important to express my support for the resolution inspired by VSBA designating March as Equity in Education Month.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair Jackson. I, too, want to speak to 1403. As someone who just recently attended an equity summit specific to education, and this was my third year doing so, I am proud of the work that Prince William County has made a commitment to do in equity. For those who aren't familiar with our definition of equity, it is in our strategic plan, defined in the back. I know there's a lot of misconception about equity being the definite meaning equal outcomes for all, but that is not true. I would highly encourage anyone who is not familiar to look it up in the back of the strategic plan. But, having said that, I think it's important that we recognize this resolution, so I'm going to read it. It is Equity in Education Month, March 2022. Whereas equity in schools has become increasingly significant focus in the United States, Virginia, and Prince William County, and whereas Prince William County Public Schools has become a global school division, and whereas we recognize that factors including, but not limited to, disability, race, ethnicity, culture, language, geographical location, and socioeconomic status must be considered when providing educational opportunities to students, and whereas the mission of ensuring every student will graduate on time with the knowledge, skills, and habit, habits of mind necessary to create a thriving future for themselves and their community is essential for every child to be successful in school and life, and whereas it is important for Prince William County's families, students, teachers, support staff, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs and capabilities of learners, and to encourage discussion of the challenges as a school community, and whereas the Superintendent of Prince William County Schools has established the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity to make recommendations to the Superintendent, and to stay at the forefront of discussions on equity in schools, and whereas we recognize that equity in resources, including but not limited to educational settings, supplies, technology, staffing, and buildings, impact student learning and development, and whereas we recognize that we must look at everything we do through an equity lens, because equity is an action word. Now therefore be it resolved, the Prince William County School Board and the Superintendent of Schools proclaim March, the month of March 2022, as Equity in Education Month in Prince William County Public Schools, spotlighting an educational equity, excuse me, spotlighting educational equity and best practices for all of our students. I really appreciate this measure as someone who's pushed this for a very long time, and I stand firm in my commitment for equity for all of our students and staff and communities. I'd also like to recognize that this is going to be Purchasing Month. As someone who has done procurement in the past, I think it, everyone in procurement deserves recognition. I see Mr. Wallingford. They are a hidden gem in our school division. They keep us afloat within standards, and we have not had a procurement issue, at least in my living memory, and they don't often get recognized. So I just want to say that we appreciate everything that you do for us. It is yeoman's work to make sure that we are in compliance, so thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
Good evening. I took my mask off because I've been told that you can't hear me in the back. I wanted to talk about 1403, and I wanted to bring the, I know people have said that they were looking at equity and they started equity, but I wanted to bring the attention that in 2016, Ms. Diane Rostin, Ms. Rita Goss, and also Mrs. Hart, and I went to Roanoke, and we met with the Superintendent of Schools in Roanoke, President Dr. Bishop. And it was with that strategic meeting that this county came up with this Equity Report Card. And we have been pushing equity for a long time. There's a, there's a little, there's a graphic where there's the three kids, and you talk about the difference between equality and equity. I honestly, when I look at some of the things that are happening in the county right now, we're not even at that equality level in some instances, so we need to move on with that. But I wanted to recognize Mrs. Ross and Mrs. Goss and Ms. Hart, because we had a good ride down there, but we, I'm on that challenging school committee, and that's where I met Dr. Bishop. And that Equity Report Card is something that, is something that we can look at and determine where, directions, and looking at not just academic, but infrastructure and various items. I also wanted to talk about 1406, social workers. I know we're adding social workers, and there's, I'm hearing all sorts of problems in schools, and as I read the confidential reports each week, I am amazed at the number of students that are involved in behavioral situations. In fact, I got a call today from a parent, and he said, "I want..." In fact, I got a call today from a parent, and he said, "I want to talk to you about something happened at my school, and my child did this, and my child did that." And he said, "Oh, by the way," he mentioned suicide. And I said, "Have you talked to a social worker? Have you talked to a psychologist?" It's something that we really need. I'm so proud of the social workers and the psychologists, because this mental health issue is something that we need to address. The business honor roll. When I came on this board, I was a big college-bound person, because I'm the first one in my family to go to college. But I have come to respect Mr. Wright and the business community and career education, and I'm very pleased that we're going to have a relationship with the business community. Finally, fourteen oh eight, Down Syndrome, special education. Many of you do not know that my background was in special ed, but that my husband's sister was a Down Syndrome student at this hospital where I work. And so it's a personal relationship, and I've seen many strides in terms of the life expectancy of Down Syndrome students, and I wanted to bring attention to that. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Roston? We can't hear you, Ms. Roston.
Thank you.
So the vote is seven yes, one not present, one absent from vote. Dr. Latif, motion passed.
All right, the next section is fifteen, citizen comments. Those citizens who have signed up in advance at the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for the regular school board meetings is unlimited to one hour, with the first half hour reserved for comments on agenda items only. And the second half hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to operations and policies of Prince William County Schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified or they will be asked to step down. We have ten speakers on agenda items and ten on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. When you are called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And again, for any speakers who are signed up to speak who are seated in the atrium, please proceed to the open entrance to the public meeting room, and you will be directed to the front. I will start by calling the first five speakers to the front. Please take a seat in the front row and come to the podium when you hear your name called. Again, I apologize for mispronouncing anyone's names. The first five speakers are Cynthia Kilmer, Amanda Ballard, William Deutsch, Erica Trudanek, and Jennifer Carol Foy. First, Cynthia Kilmer.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Kilmer. My address is on file with the clerk. Thank you, Mrs. Wall, Mrs. Jackson, and Dr. Latif for placing mandatory weekly testing on the agenda for tonight. Two weeks ago, I presented to you the facts that clearly prove why the resolution of ensuring safe learning and a safe workplace are no longer valid. It logically and legally makes no sense, and I thank those of you who have listened with open ears to understand that there is no fault in change. Circumstances change, data changes, necessity changes. The new metrics you must look to are focused on social and emotional effects. This resolution has caused enormous stress and anxiety on some of your best staff. No American should ever be worried about complying with something that violates their rights simply to put food on their table. Our rights are no ones to take and are certainly not for sale for COVID relief money. These staff members have struggled worrying about themselves, their families, the burden on their colleagues, and of course, their students. We care for our students and do this job for far more than a paycheck. It is a passion that we chose and love. The county keeps referring to learning loss and has asked our teachers to conduct remediation and tutoring sessions outside of contract hours to help our students with lost skills. This is so contradictory when you consider the hundreds of certified teachers that this resolution would remove from the classroom. Our students need a return to normalcy, not more disruption. Unvaccinated staff and students are not a threat to the schools, and the climate that has been created by these policies is causing division. It is no one's business to know a person's vaccination status. The execution which was stated by the resolution to be overseen by the Superintendent and her staff is full of errors and practices that violate the American Disabilities Act and the basic privacy. The E E O C has made it clear that disclosure of an employee's vaccination status should be information gathered only by human resources and should be kept confidential, separate from the employee's personal files. Principals are being emailed weekly reports listing staff that must test, and the testing locations are at schools in plain sight of students, staff, and parents. There are multiple signs posted throughout the parking lots that specifically say PWCS COVID employee testing. There have been, this has been nothing but confidential. Now that the Virginia has passed Senate Bill 739, it is time to allow masks to be a choice. Please remove masks without imposing new mitigation measures that divide, isolate, and segregate the students. Unmasked students are not a threat to the school. The most beautiful thing about what Virginia has passed is that it is not forcing anyone to not wear a mask. Anyone who wishes to wear a mask is of course welcome to do so, and at this point, free will should be the only mitigation measure. Stop contact tracing your students. Ninety-seven percent of students who have gone home due to COVID contact tracing never become positive. These policies are demanding your students, are damaging your students in ways that no one in this world is prepared to fix. This damage is avoidable and needs to be stopped. The need to reverse COVID protocols become evident when counties like Falkir literally miles away have removed masks, stopped contact tracing, and do not test their teachers. COVID is not smart enough to stop at the border between Prince William and Falkir. Tonight, please remove, reverse the weekly staff testing. Please begin dialogue that moves towards providing your students and staff the ability to attend school at the discretion of their own personal mitigation.
So we have the folks speaking on the agenda items, and I would ask you to continue to speak on just the agenda items that you signed up for. That would be very helpful. Next will be Amanda Ballard. After her will be William Deutsch, then Erica Trudanek. Ms. Ballard.
Hello, I'm Mandy, and I am a mother out of Gainesville. Sometimes parents don't agree with the board. That's essential and healthy part of democracy. However, when one side stops participating in dialogue, trust in the process begins to fade. If it continues, trust is lost completely. This is the strategy the board has adopted. They'd rather file lawsuits aimed at institutionalizing segregation instead of responding to parents' concern regarding the treatment of their children. So in effort to give you, the members of the board and superintendent, one chance at doing the job you were elected to do, I have come down here tonight so you can publicly defend your actions. On February 1st, my six, eight, and 10-year-old children, and only my children, who were protected by a religious exemption from masks for nearly six months, were suddenly escorted from their classrooms like criminals, abruptly denied their education and placed in the front office, separated from teachers and peers the entire day.
Ms. Ballard.
No, I need to be able to speak to you. Dr. McDade will not respond to my emails. None of you will. I have sat and emailed and called, and the only person that has emailed me back was Jen Wall, and she asked for Dr. McDade to respond to me. And I would like to be able to finish my speech, because it is my, I am here on behalf of my children that you guys have segregated. This has happened in the past, and it's not going to happen to my children again. I should be allowed to finish my speech. You've denied people out there the ability to speak. The whole point is on section eighteen, I think the eighteen point one, on you guys saying that you guys don't want the 30-day posting requirement. This is the reason why. Because you guys are trying to pass, you are trying to pass policies and hide them. I've been told that all of this stuff was based off policy. This isn't policy. You've referenced me to 275 dash two. It's not a policy. It's not a policy. And no one, and no one, no one has been able to give me the policy stating that my kids are in violation of anything, of medical masking or any of that stuff. So I should have the right to speak, and it's very inappropriate of you to cut me off. But I'll be done now, and you won't be done hearing from me, because guess what? I'm a domestic engineer, and the job that I have is to continue to advocate and fight for my children. It's not done.
William Deutsch. And remind the speakers, please speak to the agenda item you said you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to speak to Agenda Item Eighteen Point Zero Two. Agenda Item Eighteen Point Zero Two is a policy change that's under consideration at this board meeting. What that policy change would do, would allow for this school division to issue regulations with no notice to the public. It strikes out the requirement for a 30-day notice of regulations to the public and changes it to zero. So what this policy could do is allow the superintendent to issue a regulation at 5:00 PM on Tuesday night that would take effect at the start of school on the next morning. Policy like this is highly problematic. The reason given in the justification document for this policy is, quote, "efficiency." Efficiency is not the only reason why we pass legislation. But as we're seeing in other agenda items here today, the board is having to revisit their decisions because of their failures in looking at and addressing things. So when you look at long-term efficiency, long-term efficiency means that you measure twice and cut once. You don't rush policies through. You don't rush regulations through without any notice to the public. And that is what this board is considering doing. Changing, the other issue with this policy is that in general, this board has done a very poor job of spelling out policies. Policies have been rushed through under this board through the consent agenda with very little discussion, with very little amendments. And so when you have policies that spell out very little and give almost all the control to the superintendent for what those details are, and then you're going to change the implementation of any topic under the sun with no notice to the public. Quite frankly, that is the type of thing that builds up distrust and frustration from the public. I've seen, I've seen things change very quickly here. And for this board to move forward with this policy in the name of efficiency and continue their efficient practice of silencing the public, pushing them out of the dialogue, and ignoring them by advancing this policy would be wrong. So it's time for this board to reverse course and again take up what we did under the last board, and that was prioritize public input and listening to the public. Thank you.
Ms. Erica Trudanek.
I just don't want to be cut off like my friend. I did sign up to speak on two different agenda items. So if they only wrote down one, I did put the two bullets in there. So I just want to make sure I don't get cut off halfway through.
Yeah, I have you down for second quarter performance and update eighteen point.
Okay, can I restart my time, please?
Start the clock.
My name is Erica Trudanek, and I live in the Brentsville District. I'm here to talk to you about your continued ridiculous response to this pandemic. I have fought from the beginning to send our kids back and unmask them. I've spoken to you about the emotional, mental, and physical toll this has taken on my children. Unfortunately, we tried to go mask-free at the beginning of the year, and only one of our schools honored that request. But it came with segregation mitigation that was exclusionary and uninclusive. So my teens didn't want that kind of education and chose to comply. Recently, they have wanted to go mask, haven't wanted to go mask-free in fear of not being able to play the sports they love. They are constantly living in fear worried because our personal medical choices, they will have to quarantine because yet another vaccinated and masked kid has magically gotten COVID, and they are a close contact. Do you hear how stupid that sounds? Their grades have suffered, their sweet clear faces have increased acne from face diapers. Enough is enough. Our children should not have to live in fear or make choices between normal teen activities and life without a mask. You have also denied us rights as parents. I'm not allowed to step foot in one of my son's schools unless I show vaccination status or a negative test, but I'm able to enter both of our kids' other schools and attend sporting events packed with hundreds of people, but you'll only let 40 people in this room? Again, the stupidity, hypocrisy, and inconsistency is overwhelming. What you have done to our teachers and asked them to do is a huge violation of their rights as well. Making them test or vaccinate or get out, where's the freedom? I'm also here to say to you that although our governor just signed a law ensuring that our children don't have to wear a mask anymore, I'm still weary of what choices you'll make over the next few weeks. I will not forget that every single one of you, every single one of you on the school board voted in favor of masking our children, vaccinating our teachers, and suing our governor. You choose, you may choose tonight to take that back this evening, but you can't be trusted, and the damage you have done to our kids is irreparable. This dumb game that we've been playing has gone on too long and filtered through your hands. Please know that once the masks come off, we won't stop there. We won't allow your silly mitigation strategies to keep harming our kids. We will continue to fight for our kids and their futures, and we will do everything we can to replace every single one of you on this board with people that care about our kids, teachers, and their futures. We are watching and paying attention to the continued tricks and rule amendments you're trying to skate by us. You continue to not want to be held accountable. You flip-flop when it benefits you. We are watching and on high alert, and will not continue to allow you to abuse our children. The unmasking will be wonderful, but the overtaking will be glorious. And I also would like to thank you, Dr. Latif, for your tweets today in favor of unmasking our children, and I hope that you back that up now that an election year is coming.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, point of order.
All right, let's try to maintain decorum in the room, please. Please have proper decorum, okay? We have Jennifer Carol Foy next, and then Kimberly Stewart and Kaylee Bruton.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Carol Foy, and I live in Woodbridge, and my children go to school in Woodbridge. I want to thank the school board and Dr. McDade for all of your hard work and dedication to Prince William County families, students, teachers, support staff, and school administrators. I'm here today to speak about my support of the Equity in Education Resolution. Our children are diverse with diverse needs. Actively promoting equity in the classroom helps remove barriers so all of our students can succeed. And when every student has the resources they need, everyone thrives. Some students need and deserve more help, such as our children with autism, cerebral palsy, English as a second language learners, and ADHD. The evidence tells us educational equity will produce better social, economic, and civic outcomes for both individuals and entire communities. Equity in schools has become an increasingly significant focus in this country. It is important for Prince William County to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges as a school community. I again thank you. Our community thanks you. Our Commonwealth thanks you for all of the hard work that you all are doing and all of the harassment that you all receive, but you are standing the moral high ground and doing what's right for the people in this community. Thank you so much.
Kimberly Stewart.
My name is Kimberly Stewart. My address is on file. Educators have endured an incredible amount of pressure and challenge the past two and a half years. They have sacrificed a lot to show up every day to do their very best in an ever-changing and ever-demanding landscape of shifting expectations to do the most with often the least. Today, I'm here to urge you to vote yes to suspend the September 15th, 2021 resolution that will remove valuable and impactful teachers and staff from our schools and further negatively impact our students. These teachers and staff deserve our respect, the utmost integrity, and right to refuse medically mandated vaccination or required testing. They deserve the right to refuse a medical procedure forced upon them without their consent and to not have to choose between their health or their livelihood. If this school board votes to keep the unscientific, highly political policy, you will be choosing to lose impactful and irreplaceable staff that are valued and loved members of this community by students, parents, and their schools. Civil liberties are rights guaranteed to us under the U.S. Constitution. They have been described and interpreted as natural rights which are inherent to each person and constitutionally protected, right to privacy being one of them. I urge you to uphold the humanity integrity of our system and vote yes to suspend the resolution. These are teachers and staff that inspire, encourage, uplift, support, and love our children, and they deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Good teachers are hard to find. Great teachers are impossible to replace. Recent and current COVID policies this board hasn't continued to implement are outdated, unscientific, rooted in political theater, and are harmful to our students. As we learn more about the costs and As we learn more about the costs and risks of mask mandates, forced vaccination, flawed testing, impractical quarantine and tracing, and the harm of lockdowns, it must be made known that the outdated policies have no place in our county and no place forced upon our children and the staff of this district. I urge you to vote tonight to do the right thing, to move our county in the right direction, to get back on the right track, and get back to focusing on the most important job of providing students with PWCS, a world-class education that treats all of its stakeholders, majority and minority, with dignity, respect, and human decency. I commend the teachers who have pushed back on this flawed policy and the parents who have stood up to the tyrannical policies on children when it comes to COVID-19. In the words of Martin Luther King, "One has not only a legal, but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws. An individual who breaks a law that conscience tells him is unjust and who willingly accepts the penalty in order to arouse the conscience of the community over its injustice is reality expressing the highest respect of the law." Please vote yes to end the resolution. Thanks for the privilege to hug the mic tonight.
Ms. Bruton. Kaylee Bruton. Callie.
Good evening. I am here tonight to speak again on behalf of the staff members that are working under discriminatory policies and the looming threat of unpaid leave and eventual termination result of your resolution from September if it is enforced. It has been said that those of us that are speaking up are only a minority, the fringe, the few, unaccepted, with extreme beliefs, far-right, less-than, whatever the label it may be. But these labels have been weaponized and will punish anyone who doesn't shut up and comply. While I know my personal wish for our path through the pandemic had gone a little different, I understand it was a confusing time. But lately, we have seemed to accept that segregation and discrimination, such as these policies, are necessary, and as many call it, "for the greater good," or "for health and safety." But it is not 1963. It is not 2021. It is not acceptable to sacrifice our freedoms for the greater good because with the data we've gathered, the numbers we've tallied, the vaccines time-tested, and the results verified, we have gained clarity. It is no longer about health and safety, and the political theater needs to end. It is time to admit the mistakes and the wrongdoings. It is time to make a change. The disastrous results of the public school system attempting to become a healthcare management facility was more than enough. We stated this last week. But what hasn't ended is our medical and religious beliefs being slandered, vilified, and publicly placed in the view of everyone to judge. All while the shaming done from this department and the threats of what would happen to us is hidden. And why is that? I believe it's because those put in charge of this policy and these mandates consider us to be the fringe, consider us to be less than human, consider us expendable and worth losing. My mental health has all but killed me this year. It is completely as a result of these policies and the vicious treatment of the Health Department... I'm sorry, the Human Resources Department and the Prince William County COVID team. I have been called a danger to my community, told I will be excluded from work, and hearing these things over and over sent to my personal cellphone, called and had messages sent upon me week after week has made it hell. My whole heart goes into my work. I work so that my students feel encouraged, safe, and welcome to share their beliefs, their feelings, and do their best work. But you have not given us the same respect. I do not feel encouraged. I do not feel heard. I do not feel safe, and I cannot do my best work under these circumstances. Upholding this resolution and clinging to the pass will do permanent damage to our community. In closing, I'll read for you the equity statement that you hold so dear and that we should stand behind. Prince William County is committed to inclusive practices that promote equity for all. This statement does not say "for those who believe the majority," who "those who stand with a political belief," who "those who are willing to comply with our medical advice." It says "for all." Please be inclusive. Please continue to strive for excellence. Please respect us, and please vote to rescind this resolution. Thank you.
Jalen Custis. Jalen Custis, please refrain. Mr. Custis.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, Superintendent McDade, members of the school board. First of all, I'll be speaking on 18.01, and I'm from Woodbridge. First of all, I'd like to make this clear that if you compare this to discrimination and segregation and try to compare it to what happened in 1963, you are very ignorant. That is... That's just how to say that. And also...
Hold on one second. Let's just... Let's let the speaker speak. Please no cheering from anyone on this. Let's just let each speaker speak so we can all hear him. Mr. Custis.
Thank you. That was just my side note. My name is Jalen Custis. I'm a senior at Forest Park High School. I'm also the S.A. president there. I was here last Monday giving my opinion and suggestions on the proposed budget. Tonight, I'm here to say my opinion on 18.01, which is to suspend teachers and other staff members from having to be vaccinated against COVID-19 or go against weekly testing, you know, go through weekly testing. Now, I ask myself, why would the same school board who is concerned about the safety of our students, teachers, and staff members want to repeal this resolution? We would... Why would the same school board who is suing the governor over mask mandates roll back on a policy that is ensuring the safety of our staff and students? As a student of Prince William County Public Schools and someone who has been following this topic heavily, it's quite confusing. In multiple statements made by Dr. McDade, she stressed the importance of following CDC guidelines and recommendations that all the divisions... That all the decisions made regarding COVID were for the safety of everyone, which I totally agree with. But what I do disagree with is picking and choosing what to follow. If the health and safety of our teachers and students are so important, then why do we go the whole nine... Why don't we go the whole nine yards and follow the CDC guidelines? We can't expect students and staff to be safe if we only follow some of the guidelines. We can't expect to make an apple pie without apples. I do know that the county still recommends getting vaccinated if you can, but for the same reason that the teachers are getting a choice whether or not to be vaccinated, the parents and students should get a choice whether or not to wear a mask. Even though the General Assembly and the governor are going to get rid of it by March 1st, the school board should uphold it. I see students, even some teachers, not wearing their masks properly. They are useless, especially at this point if the school board seems to want to roll back on this. I want to reiterate that if you pass this resolution, you're giving the teachers a choice, but what about the students and parents? Where's our choice? I would like to make this clear that this is not... This statement is not representing my views. It's just for something for you guys to think about. It's just an opinion. In closing, you may wonder why a student here is trying to affect something that has to do with teachers. As I said last week, and as I said to my school board member, Mr. Justin Wilk privately, the decisions that you make strongly... The decisions that you make don't affect you. It affects us, the students, greatly. I hope you strongly consider my words and think about your future actions, especially when it comes to COVID-related matters. I hope we can get over this COVID thing. I do agree that you should have a choice, and I hope we uphold that and not waste our time because we have more important issues, and I'm upset that I have to actually take time to speak about this when there's more important issues going on in our county. Thank you, and have a good night.
Teri Dagenhart. Teri Dagenhart, and then Martha Cutzinger will be last. Please, folks, let her get through her speech.
Good evening. My name is Teri Dagenhart, and my address is on file. I want to thank you for your time tonight and especially for having the employee testing on the agenda. This is my 25th year of teaching and my eighth in Prince William County schools. Every year, it seems that my job grows, requiring more of my time, more of my efforts, and more of me. The last two years, of course, have been the hardest years I've spent. However, not once have I regretted choosing this profession. It fills me to be with my students and to see them learn. It strengthens me when I get emails and messages from previous students and parents telling me that I am still one of their favorites. It empowers me when these messages tell me that I was the only teacher who ever really understood them. Recently, I received a message from a parent who had been talking with her girl about teachers who'd had a positive impact. The girl said that I stood alone at the top. She said Mrs. Dagenhart was amazing and just understood that I learned things differently, and once I get it, I just soak it up. I remember having those conversations with this girl many times. She's always wanted to go into medicine, but now she's contemplating being a math teacher. Now that is empowering to know that five years later, I still have that much impact on a student. And just as empowering as hearing from another parent that there is a wave of relief that washes over her when she sees my name on that postcard every August, I've had three of her four children. This year, though, things have changed with the passage of the resolution ensuring safe learning and a safe workplace on September 15th. Being told that I must be vaccinated or regularly test for COVID or lose my job was rather shocking. I couldn't believe that was happening here in America, the land of the free. Then the message changed. If I didn't test, I would be written up for insubordination, then put on unpaid leave. And if that didn't convince me, well, then I would be dismissed from my job I have invested my life into. I felt so betrayed by the very profession I have been so dedicated to for so long. To feel that all of my efforts and care and love didn't matter as much as getting a shot or being tested every week for a virus that every person can get and spread was devastating. I have seriously had thoughts of leaving. No job, no matter the love for it, is worth betraying myself and my strongly-held religious beliefs. I have felt dejected and saddened since September, and the anxiety over losing this profession that I need has been immense. So tonight, it is with a grateful heart that I am here, filled with hope and expectation that I and so many of my colleagues, who I'm sure have very similar stories to mine, will no longer need to face the premature and bitter end of our life's calling being a teacher. I ask you tonight to please help us to be free to teach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Cutzinger.
Hello. Thanks again for the opportunity. I'm here to speak tonight on the equity resolution, which, as you know, is a repeat of previous resolutions, the May 2021 equity statement, and of the VDOE guidance. And incidentally, few people in the previous years where equity has been a subject have understood what equity is or its agenda, but thousands of us understand what it is now. Equity statement... I'm sorry, did any of you... By the way, March is at Equity Month, replaced March is Women's History Month. Did anyone object to that at all? Because I do. Your Equity Committee cites the VDOE and Ed Equity Guidance as its first source, your committee that helped you draft the statements that you... Your resolutions and statements. Also, the SACE website states this, quote, "Education equity is achieved when we eliminate the predictability of student outcomes. Based on race, gender, zip code, ability, socioeconomic status, or languages spoken at home, our definition of education equity is informed by student-centered outcome data." The Ed Equity Guidance that is your source cites numerous sources, amongst them Gloria Ladsen-Billings, Ibram Kendi, and the National Equity Project, and I'm going to talk a little bit about all three. Your source, Ladsen-Billings, created culturally responsive pedagogy, which led to culturally responsive instruction now required for teacher licensing in Virginia. I think you know that. Her 1995 paper titled "Toward a Critical Race Theory in Education" was the genesis of culturally responsive instruction. Last March, in the VDOE webinar on equity in culturally responsive instruction for all teachers, the flowchart detailing a culturally responsive teacher used the publication "Critical Race Theory Today" as its source. Your source, the National Equity Project, explains in detail on its website how to defend against the criticisms of CRT in schools. They reference systemic oppression and equity together. From an American Bar Association article entitled "A Lesson on Critical Race Theory," CRT co-founder Kimberly Crenshaw notes, quote, "CRT is not a noun, but a verb, just like your equity resolution talks about equity." The article refers to Gloria Ladsen-Billings as one of the originators of CRT, your source for your equity documents. And to quote Mr. Kendi, "The defining question is whether the discrimination is creating equity or inequity. If the discrimination is creating equity, then it is anti-racist. If the discrimination is creating inequity, then it is racist. You're supporting discrimination." Finally, you are not reinventing the wheel here. You are not using a different definition of equity than Virginia Department of Education... I'm sorry, you are trying to by saying that it's based only on opportunity. It's based on outcomes. You're not reinventing the wheel on what's next or what road you're going to take to equity. There's one road. There's one agenda. It's disastrous for all students, and it's based on outcomes, and you will never be satisfied on those outcomes. You will continue to judge your opportunity based on outcomes. Stop lying to us, please.
Thank you very much. So we're moving to the next list of non-agenda items. We have Margaret Franklin, Richard Jesse, Derek Wood. Margaret Franklin.
I am Supervisor Margaret Franklin, Vice Chair of the Board of County Supervisors, representing the Woodbridge District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for presenting your strategic plan. It's a wonderful opportunity to move Prince William County forward. I want to first start by thanking our school board for the work that you have done over the past year, couple of years, in making sure that our students have the best learning environment possible under a pandemic. I also want to thank our teachers for stepping up to the plate and adjusting their learning plans to ensure our students are receiving a good education under difficult circumstances. Never in my life have I seen teachers be vilified in the manner that I've seen over the past couple of years. You are underpaid, overworked, yet 1,000% committed to your students, and you should be thanked for your hard work. Lastly, I want to thank our parents. This has been a tough two years for everyone, and you had the difficult task of making sure your children were focused while participating in distance learning. We should all thank our parents because no one side of these controversial issues that we've had can take ownership of support for our parents. We all support our parents. Thank you.
Richard Jesse.
Oh, sorry.
Richard Jesse.
My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. And my wife is on the school board. Thank you.
Have some order in the back, please. Thank you.
It's interesting, Chair, that I appreciate you asking for order because you didn't do it last week, and you needed to. You know, one of the things, talking about Black History Month and some of the things... One thing I would recommend the board to consider is that we have the schools have a day or so to recognize the naming of their schools. Many of these schools in the county are named after people, and after a certain amount of years, nobody knows why they're named that, and I would recommend that. But let's talk about some of the issues tonight. You know, people have a feeling that they have a right to freedom. Well, we have a right for freedom. We have a right to say, "We don't want you to be teaching our kids not wearing masks, not being vaccinated," and insisting that you have the right. We have the right to say no to you. And, you know, people on the other side want to say, "We want our freedom. We have the right." Well, I'm happy tonight that we have people, and I would ask everyone who supports me to stand up in this room because we have a right, and we now have some people to tell you that they are not the only ones talking. And I'm tired of hearing, and I appreciate you coming tonight and so forth. You know, people talking about emotional control. What do you think about our kids who... And parents who have people... Kids who are sick, who have immune deficiency, having been taught by somebody who has not have a mask on, sitting with kids who have not been vaccinated?
Folks, please, in the back, I'd like to have some order, please. Let's just wrap this up. Go ahead, Mr. Jesse.
No, we'll wrap it up, but give me my... You know, claim my time. You know, all I want to say is, again, we need to come out and we need to speak out because if we don't speak up, the other side will dominate this board. Thank you.
Come on, folks. That's enough. Mr. Derek Wood.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of this board. I don't make it a practice to come to other people's meetings, but it's a pleasure. I'm the mayor of the town of Dunfries. I come as a husband of a teacher who works in the system, also as a father who has a child in the system. First of all, to my elected, I just want to commend you for your leadership and serve. I think being an elected official is one of the most unappreciated jobs, and I don't think a lot of people understand the policymaking. Leadership, to me, is like the capacity to influence others through inspiration, motivated by passion, generated by vision, produced by a conviction that's ignited by a purpose. I want to say that change is one of the constant things, and growth and change is uncomfortable in anything you do. And so I want to commend you for the decisions you make. I just want to say, as you make these decisions, continue... continue to let your conscience be your guide, right? Continue to vote your values and the things that you believe in. We all know that you've been elected to serve as a leader in your community and a voice. I want to speak to also Dr. McDade. You've been here for less than a year. July 1st, you came in, and just going over your strategic plan, all 58 pages compared to the previous strategic plan, and I want to commend you for just the vision that you've done in launching Thriving Futures. The research, I didn't go and check all the references, but I definitely liked the research, the glossary turns, how you broke down the profiles of the students. It reminds me almost of a DISC assessment, and just to be able to relate to those students. And so I just want to let you all know that I support what you all are doing in here and the decisions that you've been elected to do. Continue to make those tough decisions and continue to let your conscience be your guide. As a community leader, I don't get to come here that often, but I just want to say thank you for your work that you do and continue to serve with passion.
Cozy Bailey.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Chairman Latif, Dr. McDade, and other board members. My name is Cozy Bailey. I'm the President of the Prince William NAACP, and my address is on file. I currently reside in the Potomac District that's ably represented on this board by Mr. Justin Wilk. I have a few words to say tonight, but I wanted to kind of divert from that for a moment. You've heard some pretty vitriolic speech tonight. As a social justice advocate and one who's highly passionate, I know that sometimes the vitriolic speech is very effective. Unfortunately, the vitriol that you've heard tonight misses the mark. So, you know, there are certain seasons during the year, and when, for instance, when Easter comes around, I like to watch the movie The Ten Commandments. Some of you probably do too. When Christmas time comes around, I'm a sucker for It's a Wonderful Life. But here during Black History Month, I continue to watch over and over again that 1987, '14 part series called Eyes on the Prize. And as I've been watching that this month, I thought it appropriate for me to come to you and to remind you all to keep your eyes on the prize. You have a North Star, and your prize, in my opinion, is the strategic plan that was created and delivered and now under implementation by Dr. McDade. It has four simple but comprehensive goals or commitments, you know, and I carry this around with me, my little cheat sheet. Number one is learning and achievement for all, for all. Positive climate and culture, family and community engagement, and organizational coherence. And then, as my good friend Mayor Wood has already said, very detailed information follows from that. And I would tell you that that is your prize. That is where you should keep your eyes. It was done by our, the team that's put together by a professional and passionate and courageous superintendent. She came to us, well-prepared, well-experienced, but when she arrived here, she did her due diligence in order to create and to try to live up to this mantra that we've had here for years, providing a world-class education. So I say again, keep your eyes on the prize. As you go through this, the challenges are going to be many, and you're going to be under attack, as you have been tonight. But continue to keep your eyes on the prize. Don't fall victim and prey to the contrived culture wars that people will try to bring in here because what is important is to keep our eyes on the prize of a world-class education for the children of this community, Prince William County. Thank you so much for your attention tonight.
Mr. Joshua King. Josh King.
Good evening, board. My name is Josh King. My address is on file. I come here tonight as a parent with three children in public schools, at one high school or one middle school, and one in elementary. I'm happy to say that my kids have come back to school after being out for a while, and they're doing well. I'm here tonight for several reasons. First, I want to commend Dr. McDade for her incredible strategic plan. The pay increases for our hard-working teachers and the support for our special needs is one big thing that hits home for me. I think it's long overdue that we take care of our teachers, and especially our special needs teachers. I want to thank you for making sure our special needs students are not an afterthought. For far too long, children like my daughter have not been a priority. Thank you for working hard to change that. Finally, I want to thank you. I want to talk about the amazing teachers who risk their lives every day. They are hard-working and public servants, and they deserve a shot at collective bargaining. I believe that they need a voice, and now it's time for them to move forward. Thank you so much.
Ma'keah Little. After Ma'keah Little will be Chloe Murphy, Sean Daly, and Oveta Scott, and then Emmett Fletcher. But we'll go with Ma'keah Little.
Greetings, Dr. McDade, Chairman Latif, and members of the Prince William County School Board. I would like to speak with my fellow co-parents this evening. Once upon a time, an education was something afforded only to those with the resources and means to send their children to school, foregoing their labor and contributions to their households. Horace Mann, a pioneer of American public schools in the 19th century, famously called education "the great equalizer of the conditions of men." The claim has been widely accepted as universal ever since. So tonight, I have a question. If a public education is supposed to be the great equalizer, why are so many objections to equity work and equity-minded thought within public schools? If your child gets to see themselves and their ancestors reflected in the curriculum, then my child should have the same opportunity to feel connected to the constants of their lesson plans. If you want your child to learn alongside my child and breathe freely, my child should have the ability to learn alongside your child without developing a life-threatening illness that negatively impacts their ability to breathe. I've had discussions with elected officials within our community regarding our teachers, our children, and staff being forced to return to the classroom without proper protections in place. My question to them at the time was, "Can you guarantee that no child will die?" Unfortunately, we experienced tragedy in Prince William County at the end of 2021 with the death of the first child within the Commonwealth. As the sister, I'm speaking, thank you. As the sister of a 20-year Elizabeth Von Elementary School teacher, tonight I now ask, "Can you guarantee that no educator or staff member will die?" The truth is no. In this out-of-control pandemic, we simply cannot guarantee that, but that is not the job our county's educators signed up for, to risk their lives to educate our children. And as a mother of three Prince William County students, yes, I also worry about learning loss. However, how important does learning loss become if my child is dead? I, for one, am not willing to gamble with their lives, and I know without a shadow of a doubt in saying that I speak for the majority of parents in this county. You do not. So if homeschooling and private schooling are what you prefer your child to have at the breathing liberties and lesson plan restrictions that you want them to have, cool. But for a public education, it is important that we understand and accept that the public policies and procedures we establish will have to work for the health, safety, and well-being of the public. Thank you.
Chloe Murphy. Chloe Murphy, next.
Yep, Ms.? Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
My name is Chloe Murphy. I'm a resident of the Gainesville District. I go to Gainesville Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade. My time in middle school has been rough. The seventh grade year being virtual took a toll on all my peers and me. We didn't get to see each other, meet our teachers in person, or have any social interaction. So that gave me high hopes for the school year. Whenever I returned, it was pretty normal, but everyone was masked. Now I could talk to my teachers, but I don't know what any of them actually look like. The same goes for half the kids in my school. Some of the teachers have been really rude to us, too. One of my teachers repeatedly tells kids whose masks have slipped down, "No one wants to see your ugly nose." The idea that adults tell rooms full of teens that they are ugly is more harmful to us than COVID. Today, some of my friends actually tell each other they don't want to see their ugly faces without masks. Great example, huh? We don't have to wear masks during PE, band, breakfast, and lunch, but for some reason, teachers and students think that when I go to school not wearing a mask because of a religious exemption, I'm killing others. Now I feel like I'm the virus harming everyone because they separate me from all of their kids and put a shield on my desk. According to the Virginia Department of Health, zero people under the age of 18 have died of COVID in Prince William County. Yet in 2020, suicide was the second-leading cause of death for people ages 10 through 34. Even though more kids die from suicide than COVID since COVID began, the school board isn't mandating that we wear straitjackets because that would be crazy, right? Maybe the school board should look into the mental damage that masks, shields, and other COVID restrictions are doing to us. You're worried about social and emotional learning, right? You talk all the time about the importance of that in school. What you've done to us has greatly affected everyone's social and emotional interactions. If you cared, you would remove the masks and stupid made-up six-foot distances, and you would let us be kids. But this isn't about health, is it? It isn't about our best interests. No, this is just political. Last week, a governor of many northeastern states announced that mask mandates at schools were ending. All of those governors are Democrats. A month ago, our governor signed an order that gave parents the right to choose if their kids should wear masks at public schools, and you all chose to ignore it. Today, our governor turned that executive order into law. The superintendent's response is that the school board is revising their mitigation strategies to be consistent with the new legislation. My friends in Fauke are 10 minutes down the road or maskless. We don't need mitigation strategies. You need to stop the masks, stop the distancing, and stop trying to use your powers to control us. If you choose to follow a Democrat's executive order but not a Republican's, then maybe I should follow your lead and tell my friends that rules are optional if you don't like the people that wrote them. Instead of leading, we are falling behind. Let us breathe and learn. We deserve better. I'll pray for you.
Sean Daly. Ms. Daly. Sean Daly. Okay. Oveta Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. McDade. My name is Oveta Scott, and my address is on file with the clerk. Tonight, I would like to express my appreciation of Dr. McDade for proposing a generous budget that will enable growth to deliver a world-class education for the students in our community. The proposed budget addressed critical areas of needed attention that has been neglected since the recession of 2008. Our county has lagged in promoting stronger aspects of our learning and achievement for all students. I am most thankful for the target focus that emphasized organizational coherence on a 7% pay increase as well as competitive salary adjustments for each employee. I stand here tonight with my Divine Nine brothers and sisters, who are our true partners in education. Dr. McDade, Lily Jesse, Lori Williams, you understand that we participate in serving our community with our youth affiliates at various schools throughout this country, this county. We are the ones vested in giving back by being mentors, expressing, exposing the youth to become better scholars, productive community helpers, and polished social climbers aiming for positive future endeavors. We support you, and we believe in the work that you are doing for our district. Lastly, I know that the General Assembly has passed a bill that will allow parents to elect for their child not to wear a mask while on school property. I implore this governing body to continue strategies and best practices that will keep staff and students safe. For staff, this could include flexible work opportunities for those who face peculiar challenges due to COVID-19. If you need real-time data, I welcome you to visit my school to see the impact that COVID-19 has had on the instructional process of students and staff. On a personal note, my mother has COVID, and it has caused the lack of functions of her kidneys. Honestly, it's good that I wear a mask to hide from my students the sadness, pain, and anger that I'm going through. I am afraid that I'm going to lose her. These are hard times for everyone, so please, consider the mental and social health of everyone. Thank you.
Emmett Fletcher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. McDade. I want to thank the teachers. I want to thank the administration. You have our support. My address is on file. I live in the Coles District. And Jen Walls and Lori Williams summed it up very well. We're talking about equity in education. But as the old pastor would say, "I'd rather see a sermon any day than hear one." I know for years, we had talked about the diversity on the East End compared to the West End, and it's been an ongoing topic. But I want to see the test scores at the end of the year and see what kind of progress that we're making. I also was disturbed from the last school board meeting. I felt that the meeting was totally out of control. Mr. Chairman, I'm a staunch supporter of yours, but you let it get out of control, and you're doing much better tonight. You're making progress, and I thank you. Equity is defined as achievement, fairness, and opportunity. And I believe the Woodbridge Supervisor, as well as the Gainesville Supervisor, will be on that, and we will make progress because we will be back. The previous speaker said something that was very important, and I don't know if the board realized that from last week, the disturbance that was in the atrium, it caused a lot of problems. I was watching it on TV. We had people coming here today at 4:30 trying to get into a school board hearing. 4:30, we have people, parents that work, that want to come. For a 7 o'clock meeting, they get in here at 4:30. Then we have the Divine Nine, which I myself, Ray Bell, I'm with Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, we invited the Divine Nine here. They get here at 5:30, 6 o'clock. They are in the atrium. Since that time, we have people that's trying to get into the building, and they won't let them in. That's sad. I don't agree with everything that my fellow citizens said, but the fact of it is, we have a right to our First Amendment. We have a right, as Divine Nine, to say what we want to say if we want to support the superintendent. That's our right. That's our right. So many people are veterans that have died to protect those rights. We have 40 seats in here for the whole parents.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Thank you.
Please, please do something about that.
All right. That concludes citizen comment time. We'll be moving on to 1601. We're going to go to the student representative tonight. Student rep tonight is Danya Sharifi from Gainesville High School. Junior. Junior, Ms. Simpson, joins us this evening. Go ahead, Danya.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Good evening to the school board and Prince William County community. Hope you are doing well. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you all tonight. As you may already know, our goals for this year primarily focus on school start times and dress code. You've heard about us talk about these several times this past month, so I won't be going too far into detail again. Just as an overview, we've done an initial analysis on the perspective about school start times and the benefits of the later start time. We've had our student senators ask students around their schools, and their overall consensus is that a later school start time would be extremely beneficial on various levels. The benefit was shown last year when we did a pushback for semester while being virtual, and a lot of students have brought up this example and their experience both having that later start time in contrast with the difficulties of the current start time. The representatives and I are working with the Office of Accountability to develop a survey to send to the students and parents throughout the county. This will give us some solid data points to later present as we propose the new start times we hope to be implemented in the 2022 to 2023 school year. In addition, we will be reviewing the information gathered by past representative Ben Kim in addition to conducting our own research. The proposed start times will most likely be around 8:15 for high school, 8:45 for middle school, and 9:15 for elementary school. This 30-minute gap between the start times for each elementary, middle, and high school provides time for transition and bus transportation while still not affecting release times too drastically. Jobs, extracurricular activities, childcare, sports, parent input, and family responsibilities will all be considered in the proposal for the new start times. Ultimately, a later start time has a multitude of benefits and is our top priority as student representatives that the Prince William County recognizes these benefits by implementing the new start times. Thank you for your time tonight and for giving me the chance to be the student voice for Prince William County. If you are a student, be sure to look out for ways to get involved in our push for a later start time through our survey. Again, we have our Twitter account, @PWCSRep, if you would like to contact us or stay updated. We'll be posting more about our progress on our goals there. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Very good, Ms. Sharifi. Make sure, what is the website for the survey?
It's going to be released soon through the schools, most likely through campus.
So the schools will send an email to all students?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Next, we'll go to superintendent's time. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I want to begin by acknowledging that the Virginia School Boards Association has designated this week as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. I want to echo the sentiments of the school board in thanking V. Simpson, our school board clerk, and Brandy Reeves, our deputy clerk, for their outstanding support of our school board and Prince William County Public Schools. Thank you so much. February is Career and Technical Education, also known as CTE Month. PWCS offers a wide variety of rigorous and engaging CTE programs designed to improve academic and technical understanding, offer leadership opportunities, and deliver instruction through realistic, hands-on applications. CTE instruction demonstrates the relevance and purpose in learning as students prepare for post-secondary experiences, whether they plan to enter the workforce directly, seek additional training, or enroll in a post-secondary institution. Our Learning and Achievement for All strategic commitment includes the goal of having at least 1,000 CTE students graduate high school with a minimum of six CTE dual enrollment credits by 2025. In observance of CTE Month, I would like to share a brief video highlighting one of our newest CTE programs, aviation maintenance offered at Unity Reed and Woodbridge High Schools. I'd like to ask our tech team at this time to please run the video.
I kind of fell in love with aircraft in general and like the history of planes.
I live like in between an airport and a marine base, so I always saw like planes and helicopters flying over. So I just got interested on how they worked.
I've always liked airplanes ever since I was a kid. So I would always try to keep up with the newest and latest airplanes.
I heard about aviation mechanics class towards the end of ninth grade when we were working on scheduling, and it really caught my eye.
I realized they were doing a class here, and I was like, that's cool.
In our Mechanic One class, our students are learning basic aerodynamics, aviation math, aircraft physics, and weight and balance. My second-year students are into all the different tools, how we make metal, how to clean the different materials, as well as prevent corrosion from occurring on the aircraft.
I would definitely recommend this class. It's been a lot of fun with hands-on projects, and the teacher's been really cool. And I've also been enjoying the field trip, and I feel like I've been learning a lot this year.
Definitely go for it. It's really fun here. It's not like a normal class where you have a lot of homework. It's mostly all hands-on.
So the growth rate in aviation is higher than we've ever seen it before. Airlines are now frantically looking for these aircraft mechanics. Standard pay, for the most part, starting out with a company like Boeing, you'll get start out roughly about $30 an hour. But that's not where it stops. Most companies, within five to seven years, you can actually make over $100,000 as an aircraft mechanic.
All my friends, they said they would go to Nova and then go on from there. I didn't really know what I wanted to do. I was kind of just like going with it and see what would happen. So I guess this kind of has brought direction to what I want to do in the future.
I was thinking about being a marine biologist, but I changed my plans. I'm now thinking about going into aviation maintenance, doing avionics, maybe even becoming a commercial pilot.
I can learn how to work on the airplanes. And maybe when I get a little bit older, I can fly or something along the aviation field. That would be amazing.
This type of curriculum helps get them another leg further into an aviation career, and the airlines are always, always hiring.
I look forward to witnessing how our expansion of students seeking opportunities through our CTE programs will positively benefit our students and their future aspirations. Please also watch our social media, pwcs.edu, and the Scoop newsletter for features highlighting our outstanding CTE programs. In connection with our strategic commitment of family and community engagement, I would like to encourage our parents and guardians to register for the Parents as Partners in Special Education event scheduled from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, February 26th, at Colgan High School. This event is designed to empower parents pre-kindergarten through 12th grade to advocate for their child and navigate Section 504 or special education processes to ensure successful outcomes. The event includes online resources, pre-recorded and live virtual presentations, and a live and in-person conference with parent networking opportunities. To find out more information, please visit pwcs.edu and click on the Parents link. I would like to thank our community for their support as we have worked together to ensure in-person instruction for our students from the first day of school as safely as possible. We are aware that the Virginia General Assembly has passed, and the governor has signed Senate Bill 739 that permits optional masking for students while on school property. As such, PWCS is currently reviewing and revising practices to comply with the new state law as required. And as always, changes to our mitigation strategies will be made thoughtfully with the safety, health, and instructional needs of our students and staff at the forefront while ensuring a smooth transition as we implement any new practices. Detailed guidance that outlines all of the changes to our mitigation strategies will be sent to families and employees on Friday. Mr. Chairman, this concludes our regular superintendent's report. We will now transition into the second quarter 2021-22 data update if you are prepared to receive us for that presentation.
Go ahead, Dr. McDade. Thank you.
In a few minutes, Dr. Jennifer Casada, Director of Research Accountability and Strategic Planning, will update us on the data results for our second quarter. We will be sharing a significant amount of data, so I want to preview her presentation with a few key takeaways. First, it is important to remember, as I have previously shared, the pandemic had a profound impact on our students' learning. This impact will not be easily solved and will take time. Our data continues to show that we must remain steadfast in our work and remain deliberative in our approach to addressing learning gaps. The data will show that the proportion of all elementary-level and middle-school-level students reading at or above grade level was higher at all grade levels in the second quarter. This is positive news and a testament to the hard work of our school leaders, teachers, and students. However, we have further work to do to ensure we have consistent assessments and application of the data across the school division. At the middle and high school levels, course failure rates for English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students are higher than the division average. Although these failure rates are lower than in 2020, the 2020-21, this is unacceptable and speaks to the need to continue to apply the strategies and resources we outlined in our Recovery, Acceleration, and Reengagement Plan. Keep in mind that grades are only one snapshot of a student's performance and that schools will use grades in addition to other comprehensive data sets as part of a student's profile to monitor progress of their continuous improvement plans and make necessary adjustments. This data is key as we implement our PWCS Vision 2025 Launching Thriving Futures Strategic Plan, which provides us with a detailed roadmap for improvement. Dr. Casada will now be invited to the podium to share more details on our second-quarter data.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chair Jackson, school board members, and Dr. McDade. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on student performance. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an update based on data from the second quarter. Tonight, I will cover the following topics. First, we'll look at enrollment. Current enrollment at the end of the second quarter, both in-person and virtual. Absence data. Elementary performance, which will include grades and reading level, and secondary performance, which will include grades and a failing courses analysis. At the high school level, grade distributions are included for all courses and then specifically for our weighted courses. Before we start, I would like to share some context. First, in terms of our virtual and in-person comparisons. These comparisons are included in multiple analyses. It's important that we use caution in interpreting data for virtual students given the small number of students at each level. And second, by way of reminder, Prince William County grading policies follow a standards-based grading approach. Since the focus is on students mastering standards and content, the policies allow for grade remediation and replacement. As a result, second-quarter grades may be amended. As a note, some first-quarter grades were amended after we presented to you in November, which would explain the slight variations in the numbers showing now for first quarter as compared to when we presented them in November. Before we dive into performance, we need to take a look at student enrollment. This table includes enrollment at the end of the first and second quarters. The second quarter ended on January 27th. You can see that overall enrollment increased slightly. You will also see that virtual enrollment decreased slightly. At the end of the second quarter, virtual students made up 2.3% of the PWCS population, down from 2.6% at the end of the first quarter. The table also includes the breakdown of enrollment by level and by student group. High school had the lowest virtual percentage, and middle school had the highest, but at all levels, there were decreases from first to second quarter. And decreases in the counts of students participating in virtual instruction were shown for all reported student groups. This next chart shows us absence information for the first and second quarters and totaled for the first semester. This table includes both unexcused and excused absences since all of those absences count in the state's chronic absenteeism calculations. There are comparisons for in-person and virtual students. You will see that virtual students have fewer absences than in-person students. Please also note that students who have been isolated or quarantined due to COVID and were participating asynchronously are counted as present. We will now spend a few minutes looking at elementary student performance. First, we will look at grades in the core subjects for students in grade three through five. You will see that the vast majority of students are earning grades of B or higher, with the biggest increase in the awarding of A grades are coming in science from first to second quarter. You can see that very few students are failing core subjects at elementary school. This next slide takes a look at the distributions for second quarter by virtual status. Again, it's important to use caution in interpreting the data for virtual students as well as any comparisons between virtual and in-person due to the small number of virtual students and the vast difference in counts between in-person and virtual. While all distributions show the majority of students receiving grades are B or higher, the grade distributions for virtual students tend to be more at the extremes than the grades for in-person students. The next slide shows elementary reading level. This information is based on the instructional reading level as reported on elementary report cards. Dr. McDade indicated in her introduction that the percent of students reading at or above grade level increased at all grade levels and overall increased from 61% to 68% from first to second quarter. Again, this information is shown for first through fifth grade and will be included for kindergarten students at the end of the year. Here are some takeaways at the elementary level. First, grade distributions were pretty similar in first and second quarters. We did see increases in the proportion of students reported reading as reading at or above grade level from first to second quarter. As I mentioned, grade distributions for virtual students were slightly different than for in-person students with more extremes. And again, as Dr. McDade indicated, PWCS is moving toward more common assessments, which will allow for additional in-process analyses, including from the HMH Benchmark Assessments in Reading that connect directly to the instructional materials. Now, we'll be moving to the middle-school data. The next two slides show grade distributions by subject for first and second quarter. This one shows first quarter. Across the board, slightly higher percentages of students earned grades of A in the first quarter than in the second quarter. This is not a new phenomenon, and the shifts parallel what we saw in the first two quarters of 2019-20 before the pandemic. The second slide includes the second-quarter grade distribution. As in the first quarter, the highest proportion of As were awarded in the subject areas of Fine Arts and Health and PE, with the lowest in Mathematics and Language Arts, and the highest proportion of Fs were awarded in World Languages. The next two slides look at the proportions of students passing all classes, failing one class, and failing two or more classes by quarter. Overall, 84.8% of students were passing all of their courses at second quarter, which was down from 86% in the first quarter. And the proportion of students failing two or more courses increased slightly from 5.2% to 6.5%. This slide breaks down performance in this area by virtual status and then by student group. As Dr. McDade mentioned, English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students were all failing courses at higher rates than the division average, and higher proportions of virtual students were failing courses. This next slide is a new look at the data, and let me take a moment to explain it to you. The slide is looking at how students did in terms of failing courses at second quarter based on the number of courses they were failing in first quarter. The blue bars represent those students who passed all courses in the first quarter. So overall, 93% of those students who passed all their courses in the first quarter were still passing all courses in the second quarter. Conversely, 7% of those students who were passing everything in first quarter were now failing one or more. The gray bars show those students who are failing one or more courses at first quarter. Overall, 15% of those students are now passing all courses, and 85% were still failing at least one course. Here are some middle-school takeaways. Again, the overall proportion of students failing multiple courses in the second quarter were similar to both first quarter and in 2019-20. That proportion is significantly lower than in 2021. Course failure rates for English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students are lower than last year but still higher than division averages. The shifts in grade distributions that we're seeing from first to second quarter parallel those in 2019-20. And finally, again, over 92% of the students who were passing all of their courses in the first quarter were still passing courses in the second quarter. These next set of slides are going to focus on high school data. For high school grade distributions, data included for the first quarter, the second quarter, and first semester as a whole. This first slide shows the grade distributions for the first quarter. As with middle school, the grade distribution shifted downward from first to second quarter, with in the first semester, grade distributions are somewhat higher than second quarter. This slide just shows you at second quarter. And as in first quarter, the highest proportions in high school of As were awarded in Fine Arts and Health and PE with the lowest in Math, Science, and Language Arts. And at high school, the highest proportion of Fs were awarded in Mathematics. The semester distributions show more As and fewer Fs than in second quarter since they represent the cumulative grade. Again, the highest proportions of As were found in Fine Arts and Health and PE with the lowest in Math, Science, and Language Arts, and the highest proportion of Fs were awarded in Mathematics. The next three slides take a look at grade distributions again, but this time only for our weighted advanced courses. The counts of students are included also on these slides. This slide shows the first quarter. You can see that the grade distributions are skewed more toward the higher end of the scale with more As and Bs and fewer Fs in the grade distributions for high school courses as a whole. This slide shows second-quarter distributions. As with high school overall, the distribution has shifted downward slightly as compared to the first quarter. Fine Arts and CTE courses had the highest proportion of As, with math and science having the lowest proportions of As just with the overall distribution. And finally, this slide shows the first semester distributions for our weighted courses. Again, as with the overall distribution, the distribution is somewhat higher than second quarter. You can see that lower proportions of students were receiving Fs at the semester than in the second quarter individually. This last analysis is, again, the course passing and failure rate analysis. The proportion of students passing all courses decreased from 69.9% in first quarter to 65.7% in the second quarter. Comparison of these numbers by virtual status shows little difference at second quarter. Fewer virtual students were failing multiple courses at the second quarter. Again, we do need to use caution in interpreting the virtual numbers. The slide, as in the others, includes a breakdown by student group. As at the middle-school level, our English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students were failing multiple courses at higher rates than the division average. and Hispanic students were failing multiple courses at higher rates than the division average. So here's our final data slide. Just like with middle school, we looked at how students did in second quarter based on the number of failing courses at first quarter. Again, the blue bars represent those students who were passing all courses at first quarter. Overall, at high school, 85% of the students who were passing all of their courses in the first quarter were still passing all courses in the second quarter. That's the tall blue bar on the left. Conversely, 15% of those students who were passing all of their courses at first quarter were now failing one or more. And then the gray bars show those students who were failing one or more courses at the first quarter. Of those, 22% are now passing all of their courses and 78% were still failing at least one. The data for high school show that the proportion of students failing multiple courses are a cause for concern, but the course failures are down from last year at this point in time. Course failure rates for our English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students are lower than last year, but again, are still higher than division averages. The shifts in grade distributions from first to second quarter, as with middle school, parallel the 2019-20 patterns. And finally, again, 85% of students passing all courses in first quarter were still passing all courses in second quarter. Dr. McDade indicated some of the ongoing work that's occurring in response to the student data, not just at the quarter, but through the regular progress monitoring of schools' continuous improvement plans. Schools use the data at the individual student level to determine appropriate interventions as part of multi-tiered systems of support and students are targeted for support through the interventions that are defined as part of the unfinished learning plan. And as you know, the new strategic plan details out the short and long-term strategies to support students and improve student outcomes. Thank you again so much for the opportunity to provide you with this update.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation and the superintendent's report.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. McDade? Ms. Jesse.
I just want to, let me take my mask off. Sorry about that. I wanted to thank Dr. McDade and Dr. Casada for this very interesting report. I looked at the report and I was very interested in knowing that in several slides, and I have them numbered, I don't want Jennifer to go back and pull them up, but I'm concerned about the, are we just looking at data? Are we down the road, we're going to look at root causes? Because I'm concerned about the math, the reading scores, the reading grades and modified to the special ed grades. Also, I looked at the virtual learning and I'm glad you brought that up because I was wondering why there was a higher percentage and it has to do with the small numbers. Is that what you're saying, Jennifer? I mean, Dr. Casada.
So the numbers are easily, more easily varied when the numbers of students are smaller. So the, I think that's answering your question. And so it's, there definitely were higher at some of the grade levels, higher proportions of students struggling virtually, but not at the high school level. But again, my caution was because you have hundreds of students as opposed to the thousands of students we have in person. So making the comparisons just has to come with a caveat.
And I was also looking at that you're going to be using more common assessments or you have a new language arts program. So that particular program comes with its own assessment. Is that what we're saying, we're going to be, are we using it now? We're going to be using it later?
Yes ma'am, they started implementing those this year and so those will be part of future analyses.
Okay. And the English learners, Hispanic learners, again, I'm very concerned about those scores. I know you guys are too. I don't know when we look at some root causes and share with us what we're going to be doing differently down the road. You know, when I look at numbers, I wonder why. So I'm just wondering when we're going to get some information on the why. First of all, let me just say this. We have never gotten this kind of data, so I'm very pleased with the data. Thank you.
Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to note that the data that we're sharing tonight, you'll take notice that it is similar to data that we've reported on in the past. And the Unfinished Learning Plan has identified root causes for a myriad of data, which is why I wanted to point out that this is only one snapshot and we have to be careful that we don't rely on one snapshot of data to represent the entire academic profile of our young people. The Unfinished Learning Plan, as well as the Strategic Plan, was based on the root cause analysis that used comprehensive data sets across the board, inclusive of grades. And while these grades are similar to other grade patterns that we've seen, we are staying the course with the plan that we currently have in place to ensure that we implement with fidelity and give it time to actually show evidence of recovery and acceleration.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you for this presentation and the second quarter update. I appreciate the consistency in reporting. I also appreciate a little bit deeper dive at looking at our middle school, elementary and high school for our virtual learners. I think we don't often recognize them and when we talk about our children holistically, but they are still part of our division and our learning. I also appreciate, Dr. McDade, you adding that caveat because I'm very concerned when I look at this data. It doesn't really tell us so much why our students are performing the way they are. And so I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront because I think it's important that we look at it from a holistic measure as well. I think the, one of the things that we don't talk about very often, we say the word pandemic, but we don't always address the trauma that has gone along with the pandemic that will naturally impact our students' performance academically. And trauma can be defined in many ways. So I think at some point in time, it would be nice to hear a little bit more about if we have that information available or if we're able to gather it from our students or our counselors, the different ways that that has impacted their performance in school and what measures, if any, that we are undertaking to ensure we can minimize that impact. So thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Casada, for this very great and useful information. I have just a couple of questions. One question is on slide five for the absences. And I'm assuming that, I'm going to move my thing to five, that I'm assuming this does not take into account any kids who are sent out on quarantine. So my question is, and that is correct, right? This is just absences?
It is absences and it's everything coded as absences in the system. And so students who are out but are participating asynchronously are not counting, but students who are out and are not would be counting as absent. So it records everything that's in the system as an absent.
Okay, and so if a student is out, but they're participating through Canvas or turning work in, then we count that as a present? As opposed to an absence?
That's a present code in the system, yes ma'am.
Okay, and so do we have specifics? Could we get a breakdown of, I don't know how we would capture this, but the amount of absences that students have faced from, including quarantine? So that we can see a little bit different angle on, you know, not present in the classroom? Okay, that'd be great. Looking at this data, it's clear that we have a lot of work to do and I'm encouraged that we seem to be going in the right direction. The slope seems to be improving, but I'm still discouraged that we have so many kids that are struggling, especially at the high school levels with those STEM classes like math and science. I'm discouraged by that. I'm traumatized by last year and trying to get kids in person for this reason, for what this data is showing. That kids are still impacted by how long it took for us to get them in person. So I just, I do appreciate everybody's hard work in trying to recover and it's clear we have a lot of work to do, but I do appreciate the work that's happening. My question, with the multi-tiered system of supports approach, I think it's slide 20, maybe? No, it's not. 24. Are schools following a particular model? Is there consistency for what multi-tiered systems of supports that are implemented? Or do we have kind of a site-based approach to the multi-tiered systems of support? I guess what I'm getting at is like, are some schools doing it differently than others? And if that's the case, are we looking to see like which schools are being more successful and getting that unfinished learning taken care of as opposed to other schools that maybe have a lot of kids that have high failure rates? Just kind of curious on that process of what we're looking, what we're doing to kind of? Anyway, that's a couple of questions right in there. I'm sorry, do you understand where I'm getting at?
Yes, and I want to ask our Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Rita Goss, to address that as that's not a part of the work that Dr. Casada covers. So she'll come forward and talk a little bit about our MTSS framework.
So good evening, School Board Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Jackson, School Board Members. Thank you, Ms. Wall, for that question. It's an excellent question. So it is a process that we are working on, doing more systematically and consistently across the school division. It is a part of the strategic plan and is a part of that four-year plan that we will be working to have the more consistent processes from school to school. We certainly do have a state framework and a county framework that we've been utilizing, but the implementation fidelity is the piece that we'll be working to improve over the next four years so that we do have those consistent MTSS processes at every school across the division.
Okay, great. And the reason I ask is because when I was looking at the data per school, you could see that it seemed that some of our schools were more successful in kind of catching kids up and other schools seemed to have some really obvious deficits. And so I thought maybe, you know, if there is a system, if as we're implementing with fidelity our systems, if we can figure out like, wow, this school's doing this and it's really working and kids are really getting caught up, those Fs, you know, are getting turned into Cs or Bs or As.
Absolutely.
And awesome.
Absolutely. Part of the strategic plan is to really replicate that excellence across the division and do what you're saying, right? Is to look at those places in which the systems are working well and how we can replicate those more consistently across all schools.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sargarpur?
So just really quickly, we did lose a week in the second quarter because of all the snow. And correct me if I'm wrong, there is usually a dip in the second quarter, right? It seems like people talk about the second quarter lull, right? We have Christmas, we have a big break and we come back from the break and we still have to finish the semester, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. McDade?
Yeah, Jennifer, I don't know if you want to speak to that from a data sense but we are seeing comparable to prior, this particular data set is comparable to prior years.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to know if this was, I mean, I don't want to say normal in terms of, hey, this is normal, but I feel like I've heard before that second quarter, sometimes some problems show up there, which is not always a bad thing because it gives us an opportunity to address what's going on. And then the other thing I wanted to just find out if there's any? So we sit here in this space and we're looking at data from this big perspective, but when you're inside a classroom, you know your kids, you know what they need. So this is exactly what you were talking about. This is a data point. And I know these conversations are going on in the schools and teachers and administrators are doing everything they can to meet the needs of our students. And there will be a little bit different look from school to school just because our children are different. So I just think that's more a point, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there too because I have a lot of hope that we have really great teachers and administrators who are working with this data to do the best for our kids. And just remind people of that.
Thank you. Dr. Casada, you want to speak to the second quarter comparisons?
You were correct, Dr. McDade. And so when we started doing these types of grade analyses in 1920, you're seeing very similar patterns in terms of that slight decrease from first to second quarter. It'll be interesting to see what type of rebound you see. That's the other reason we included at high school the first semester based on discussions with high school principals because again, one of the reasons for semester grades is to make sure that one quarter does not doom a student, right? And so we'll be looking at that, we'll look at third quarter and then fourth quarter and the end of year, right? And again, with the grading practices. But you are seeing similar trends to the past.
Right, and I think that's another important point for our students because when you start to feel a little like you're struggling, that you're underwater, I don't want any of our students to think that that's it, you're done. You know, that's the end of your career because we have all these people who want to support. So I just wanted to make sure we have our students hear that as well.
Wonderful, not wonderful, I mean, it is the report. And as pointed out in our strategic plan, as we enter the beginning of this year for recovery, re-engagement, and acceleration, this will be a long-term challenge. And Mr. Lepp, can I get Ms. Ralston back on the screen when you get a chance? Whenever you get a chance. Oh, great, thanks. This is not going to be easy, I think. You know, I have four children all throughout the school division, one gone now. But you know, the root cause in my house has been that the pandemic and the virtual learning was tough on them last year and it didn't prepare them for this year. And this year, their expectations are what we expect normally and it has been tough. And so we're seeing that play out in my house and in households across my constituents. The idea of social, emotional concerns, you know, kids didn't come into the year necessarily depressed, but getting hit and hard on the tests and working through school has been tough. And so, you know, I really appreciate our counselors for the effort that they've done, the work that we're really working hard to sort of address the fact that, you know, last year was brutal. It's causing some brutal grades this year that we were not expecting, especially amongst our high school students who are trying to get to college and, you know, under enormous pressure. Our students who are trying to achieve in their coursework, whether they be in their Cambridge IB programs, governor's schools, we're seeing students across the division struggle and continue to struggle. The pandemic has been absolutely brutal. Virtual learning was brutal and it has been a tough recovery. But we said it would be at the beginning of this year. We said it wasn't going to be easy. I am heartened by the fact that some of these numbers in reading are improving at our younger levels. Is that correct, Ms. Casada? The math still is sort of lagging. Is that correct? Are we starting to see any improvement in that?
So yes, no, math is the area of most concern across all levels.
Yeah. And so, Dr. McDade, I really appreciate this. The first question, really the only question I have, just, I know the answer, but I'd love for you to sort of share with us. You know, when you say the schools use this data as part of an ongoing progress, we're not waiting till the end of the third quarter to address what we saw now. We're not waiting to see what happens third quarter, fourth quarter. Tell me, tell us what we're doing in that. And I know you mentioned it a little bit, but I know this is the heart of your work and what you wake up every morning thinking about.
All schools have received, they have their data. Level associates have been working with principals to create action plans, identifying students who are in need of additional support across the board, not just academic, having check-in, checkout processes with students to ensure that someone is supporting students and, you know, monitoring not only their progress but ensuring that the support that they need socially and emotionally is addressed as well. So this is timely data for where we are right now. No, we're not waiting till the end of the year or waiting till high-stakes testing results come back. We also have other data that is coming in. We've been implementing, we just implemented the STAR reading and math assessment. So we have some preliminary data coming back from that to just show where students are. So again, we're taking this as one component, but then looking across the board at different data sets that we have. And it is a regular process within schools to not just progress monitor, but then address and, you know, intervene as necessary. So it's an ongoing process. Schools are implementing different processes within the, and strategies within the Unfinished Learning Plan and as well as some of the tutoring opportunities that we've talked about. And now this is yet another data set that helps for planning preparation for how we address different areas like math, problem areas like science, et cetera.
Dr. McDade, I assume that had you joined us, if there was never a pandemic, the strategic plan wouldn't look the way it does. So I think it's important for everyone to know that the strategic plan is based on the damage done by the pandemic and the recovery and re-engagement that is so highly necessary that we have to get back to. And re-engagement that is so highly necessary that we have to get back to. And, you know, I want to, you know, reassure the public, as far as I'm concerned, this is my number one priority, is to make sure we get our students back on academic track. And it is what I worry about every single day. As I talk to the students, as I meet with them, as I hear about their concerns, students on our board, students in the classrooms, and, and I know the principals are working on this as well. And this is the, the greater part of what we have to do. You know, there's a lot of noise out here about, you know, different things that are, you know, bothering folks and, and that bother me as well, but, but the main thing that should bother all of us is how do we support our students and our teachers as we try to recover? So I can't thank you enough for this effort, and I appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to the next board item, which will be, let me get my agenda back up, 18.01. This is the, a motion is in order on this, Ms. Jackson.
I move that the Prince William County School Board suspend the resolution of the Prince William County School Board ensuring safe learning and safe workplace of September 15th, 2021. And furthermore, that Prince William County Schools continues to strongly recommend that all eligible staff receive the COVID-19 vaccination as the best mitigation strategy available to combat negative impacts of COVID-19.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Ms. Williams seconds the motion. Discussion. Who would like to go first? Ms. Wall?
I feel there's someone whose name is on that.
Sure, either way. Ms. Wall.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in the beginning, in the beginning of the school year, when this resolution was passed, you know, our focus was getting schools open and wanting to keep them open. And we have shown that we've succeeded in that over these last five months. We've met that goal without this program being in place. I think some people assumed that this testing plan was in place from the beginning, but it wasn't. Through, so through all those months, we were successfully open. We only had to close, I think, one classroom or school, one school, but that wasn't due to unvaccinated staff or anything like that. I think it was a birthday party or something like that. So, so I think that the biggest point for, in support of this motion is that fact that we were successful despite not having this in place. Moreover, many of those underlying premises upon which we based our decision have changed. Transmission once thought to be only occurring among the unvaccinated, if you can remember back, back when vaccines were just kind of starting to get going, we, we thought that was a, a done deal, right? But we, it's now widely established to be occurring among vaccinated and unvaccinated as regardless. And so we have disconnected transmission from vaccination. Also, since September, vaccines have become widely available for our schoolchildren. We started out the year without that benefit for our younger students. Here in Prince William, we have high rates of vaccination among most student groups. For example, our 16 to 17-year-olds are fully vaccinated at a rate of nearly 82%, which is very high. You have to get up into the 55-plus group to get to that high of a vaccination rate. 12 to 15-year-olds are vaccinated, fully vaccinated at a 72% rate. Even our 5 to 11-year-olds, who are at some of the very lowest risk of COVID complications, have 42% have had at least one dose. That means, you know, parents are, are taking advantage of that. Now, we also know that vaccinations have been widely available for, for over a year now for adults, and we have booster shots, which increase the power of the vaccine, and that has been proven. We have effective therapeutic treatment options, multiple effective therapeutics for the treatment of COVID-19. We know so much more than we did even back in September. And death and hospitalization rates are very low in Prince William County. As of yesterday, 2:15, the seven-day average of new hospitalizations reported in Prince William County is one. The seven-day average number of new daily hospitalizations reported per 100,000 population is 0.1. The seven-day average of daily new deaths is two. And if you look into the data, it's not children, it's not young people, it's, it's our, probably our most complicated citizens, health, health complications. Overall, our staff is vaccinated at a rate of 93%, which is just absolutely an amazing number. Of the remaining staff who are not, or who have not disclosed their status due to personal privacy reasons, many of those individuals are subs or temps, bus drivers, custodians, others who are not in classrooms regularly, or who may not even interface much with the public at all. And percent positivity continues to rapidly fall and is now at 9%. That's what I looked at most recently, which I think was earlier this morning. This number will most certainly fall even further over the next few weeks. All regions of Virginia are reporting an R-number, that's a significant number in epidemiology, of less than 0.8. And statewide, the R-number is less than 0.6. Why is that significant? The R-number is the average number of people one person is likely to infect in the future. When that number falls below one, the virus will continue to infect fewer and fewer people and is on its way out the door. Lastly, this program has placed a very heavy burden on staff to administer, and it has proven difficult and time-consuming and very stressful, with very little added benefit in accomplishing our goal of keeping schools open, which we have been able to do, and which I spoke about earlier, above and beyond what we expected back in September, despite not having this regulation in place. So for those reasons, I see no, no good rational reason why not to suspend this board action. And in my mind, at least, it is the right thing to do.
Ms. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of what I'm going to say is probably going to be repetitive to what you said, Ms. Wall, but I'm just going to go with kind of the theme here. So similar to her theme is when the board voted for this resolution back in the fall, the science did tell us that the vaccine would help prevent the spread of COVID. Upon reflection, this vote made sense to me with the information available at the time about COVID and the Delta variant. However, COVID and the information are fluid, and we, we as a board owe it to our citizens to be adaptive, to reflect to what we do currently know. Today we know that both vaccinated, oh, sorry, John, a lot of the same points, John, but today we know that both unvaccinated and unvaccinated are now capable of spreading the viral load of the Omicron variant, and therefore targeting only the unvaccinated for this testing is unfair. On February 2nd, 2022, the CDC stated, in quotes, "The CDC expects that anyone with Omicron infection can spread the virus to others, even if they are vaccinated and don't have symptoms. Given the data we know, the only way to accurately and effectively test employees would be to examine vaccinated and unvaccinated employees." In conversations completed with nurses in my district, as a lot of you guys know, I talk to them a lot, the most isolated people are those who are fully vaccinated right now. Again, both unvaccinated and vaccinated teachers can spread the variants. I also wanted to clarify that the test itself is only for a moment. Any person tested can develop symptoms late that evening and carry COVID for the week before the next weekly test. According to my conversations with nurses and administrators, there are several days between testing and results arriving. Delayed testing results do not increase safety for staff and students. Today, with what we know, the common theme when talking to staff and building administrators is weekly testing takes time away from the employees and the energy away from more critical tasks. The current testing program is taxing understaffed and overburdened staff in benefits in our HR department. Building staff is pulled to cover rooms when colleagues have to go testing. In an environment where we already face teachers, bus drivers, and other critical position shortages, we cannot risk losing employees for a test that only targets one group of spreaders. Today, with all the downside, testing now puts an additional burden on our system with little upside. To summarize, the most crucial factor when passing this resolution back in the fall was leveraging the information we had to protect the, the safety of staff and students. Fortunately, many of my administrators have informed me that there's a large supply of rapid tests available to staff who may be symptomatic. We also have a variety of other screening and mitigation strategies in place. For all these reasons, and, and the many conversations I have had with district nurses and administrators, I support, support suspending the mandatory testing at this time. Given the current information available, it does not make logical sense to mandate the testing of one group when the other group also spreads the current variant. Thank you.
Can I get, can I have some, just, folks, just if we can have some order, we'll get through this. And I appreciate the applause for the board members and, and, and the jeers for me, that's fine. But, but, but let's, let me just get through this and try to get this done in an orderly way. Who's, Ms. Sargarpur, finish up on that side.
Yeah, so I agree with my colleagues here on the board. And I'll just give you a brief personal story. Back in November, my father went into a rehabilitation facility. He's 88 years old, and he was there due to just muscle weakness and things like that. And shortly after that, he had to go to the hospital due to some other health issues. And of course, he was tested for COVID multiple, multiple, multiple times. So I was visiting him in and out of different hospitals, different rehabilitation centers. And all this time, the, the Omicron variant was, was increasing. And the, the facilities I was in and out would, would maybe limit how many visitors could be in a room. But as I spoke with the medical professionals, they were, they were just kind of letting, letting me know that there wasn't a whole lot I was going to be able to do. You know, we're all going to, we, they, they would sort of say things like, this one's so contagious, it's hard not to catch it. And they weren't necessarily afraid of people catching it. That, that's the other side of it. So back in November, when I was seeing these things in my own personal experience, I had questions about it. My father did end up catching it, and we don't know from whom because we don't know when he was interacted with was ever positive. So that, that makes it even more of a mystery, right? He's fine, he slept it off, and he had an upper respiratory cough. And I am grateful that he is, he's fine, and he's getting even better with all his other stuff. Oh, thank you for the little clap there. But I agree with my colleagues for the, the numbers of reasons that they had. I'm also concerned about the impact that it's having on those staff with, like Mr. Wilk said, just finding subs, getting coverage. But it is also turning our school division into a healthcare system. And we absolutely cannot do that. Our teachers are burdened enough as it is, and our administrative staff, our managers are burdened. And I've heard enough about, this is just a, it's a little extra work, and it's a ton of work, right? The other thing I'm a little bit concerned about is that, you know, this, this, COVID's been very dynamic. So yet, we can change with, with the, we can be flexible about this, right? We, what we know, what we knew back in September is, is different from today. So I fully support this, and thank you for your time.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do not fully support this resolution. I do not agree with suspending it. I would have liked to see this board maybe modify the current resolution or at least have a viable discussion about it, because it is our responsibility to act as a corporate board and as an employer. Testing programs are not uncommon in any corporate setting or any major corporation or any major, large organization. The implementation of those programs is where you have the, the devil in the details. What we have done was partnered with the Virginia Department of Health and using a grant program called VISA to implement the testing. I think what we hear is a lot of rhetoric around how the testing is implemented and how the school division did such a bad job. However, that actually was not us doing the bad job. Those, that contract was supplied, supplied by the Virginia Department of Health through our grant program. So I absolutely agree, they could have done a better job, but that is not the fault of Prince William County schools. We were supplied that vendor by the state. This is a program that the entire board agreed to participate in. It's still our responsibility as an employer to ensure the safety of our employees to the maximum extent of our ability. This is current guidelines through this current administration. It was in the last current administration. And I think as long as it stands, it's something that we should really consider, especially considering mitigation factors are rapidly decreasing due to, like, new state law, there'll be no masks. While I understand that Omicron is a variant that spreads, no matter whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, unvaccinated, unvaccinated individuals still carry a higher risk. I think that that's something as an employer...
Please, I'll have to start removing, folks, please. Let everyone finish.
I think it, as an employer, it's our responsibility to at least have these conversations. While I understand the burden that is going on with staff, it is absolutely a positive that in this school division, we not only cover the cost for our employees to get tested, we provide time and coverage in order for them to do so. In other places, most employers are not doing that. You have to go get tested on your own time, at your own expense. That is not the case with our staff. Our staff are provided time...
Please.
Our staff are provided time during the workday. I completely understand...
Please, no comments from the audience, please.
When we talk about following the rules and we talk about following current regulations, these are still valid, actual recommended regulate, valid, actual recommended procedures that are still in our current VDH health regulations as of February 11th, 2022. Do I agree that everybody should be tested if it's going to work to our maximum benefit? Absolutely. But that's not what we're discussing, because this board didn't even entertain that conversation. What I do know is out of the staff that have been tested, absolutely we have had staff, staff, staff test positive. So I know that there is value in testing staff. When I hear the rhetoric from the public talking about it being a discriminatory, discriminatory measure, it is not according to, to not only our state code, but according to OSHA regulations, which anybody is welcome to check out, and I also verified with our own legal staff, because I also was concerned. It is not discriminatory. It is not a violation of HIPAA. We are well within our rights as an employer to do so, and it is recommended. So I think whether or not you disagree, that is a personal opinion, and you're more than well within your rights to do that. But I think it's important to bring to the forefront in conversation that we are in compliance. That's, that's the bottom line. So while I would have supported a modification to this resolution, I do not support an out-out suspension of this resolution. And I hope that this board would, in the future, consider having more discussions before we just take action. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
Good evening. This, the main issue of this resolution is whether unvaccinated or those who refuse to disclose their vaccination status should be subject to testing. Certain members of the board would like to keep this resolution, and I'm asking, they would like to get rid of the resolution, but my vote is no. And I'm going to tell you why it's no. And I'm going to ask the audience, I'm not sure that the board chair can control the audience, but I'm asking if you'd allow me to speak, because I did not speak when you were speaking. First of all, first and foremost, I would like to see this virus go away, so there will be no need for any mandate in any place. I've worked in a school, and I know how difficult it is. I talked to principals this week. Some said they're exhausted, teachers are exhausted. One principal said, I'm just dead. I'm running around from classroom to classroom. But it wasn't related to the testing of whether or not they were testing their teachers. We still remain at a high positivity in Prince William County. I don't know what the numbers are, where those smaller numbers came from, but we still do. I have been and continue to be a fierce supporter of teachers and their right to be heard. Whether you're a small group or not, you guys have the right to be heard. And I applaud you for coming to this boardroom, because there are people out there complaining, but they don't come in the boardroom like you, you did. So I support that. The first I heard from those who had personal, when I talked to the teachers, I'm a fierce supporter because I, when it first came, when this virus first happened, my, I was sitting in my office, and this, my computer was going zoom, zoom. I was getting hundreds and hundreds of emails from teachers. And they were sending these emails to me because they thought I would listen. They feared, the first I heard from those who had personal issues, their parents or their daughters who had health issues. They feared exposure and asked for my assistance. Some of the most heart-wrenching stories involve those having the sole responsibility of transporting or caring for individuals with cancer and other compromising immune disorders. It made me very popular. But please do not ask me to support allowing what could become a danger for 95, for the 95% of our staff that are vaccinated and would be exposed unknowingly to a COVID virus. I do not, however, support, I do, however, support your right to confidentiality. I received some emails, and I received many, but I sat down and I read them, and there were teachers telling me that their confidential... were teachers telling me that their confidentiality was being violated. And they gave me examples, and I pass this on to human resources, because that should not happen in a school. There's a system in place. I talked to, Dr. McDade was not a part of this, it was a school board, but her staff had to implement it. So I spent some time asking for data, and I spent some time talking to Dr. Eagle and asking her what the system is. I want, you know, I know I don't have the votes, and I'm not worried about the votes, to be honest with you. But I just want to make sure we understand that I go on record to tell you what I know to be true and what I know not to be true. First of all, as a principal, we had this chat, chat, write, write. So there's been, she explained to me that there's a chat where you say, I'm noticing, and there's another chat, there's another chat, there's a write, there's an action. And according to what I'm hearing, no teacher in this county has ever been removed, not dismissed because of the COVID virus, because they didn't want to participate. Last year, we had many teachers who, and I didn't blame them, because although there are people on this board who were very proud of having these kids in these schools at the beginning, without knowing how this virus was going to affect, I did not support that, and I did not brag about it, because I felt we were putting teachers at risk, we were putting kids at risk. So I am avidly opposed to having people coming to the, coming into schools when we don't know what's going on, so that we say, we got all our kids in, we have to get our kids in. I don't think we should do that. So when I'm talking to her, she reminded me that there are teachers from last year who said, I don't like what's going on, and they were allowed to come back. So they weren't dismissed. I want to make sure everybody understands that. They were not dismissed, they were allowed to come back. My vote is no for the following. Know that as a principal, I was anal when it came to safety. I often told my teaching, they'll tell you, the quote was this, you cannot, a parent will forgive you for not teaching their kids how to read, but they will not forgive you if you don't keep their kids safe. I had a handbook that nobody wants to read. I don't know any teacher out there who raised a hand that loved to read the handbook. But as a principal, you have to have one. So I had this little section, it was called, Where Were You When the Wall Fell Down? Now, I'm older, so I remember this Phil Donahue or someone, where this principal in California, the wall fell down on the kid in the cafeteria. And he was a hero until he came on TV. And people said, where were you when the wall fell down? He said, well, I was in my office. Well, why weren't you in the cafeteria? Why did you look at the structure? As a principal, we have to make sure everybody in that building is safe, so you look at the structure. Or I told the staff, when a child runs across that street into Woodbridge Middle, you better have your foot in that photograph, because I am anal when it comes to safety. So my safety concerns are the following. Students and our staff who may get the virus as a result of exposure. I've been told by many on this board that it makes no difference, that those who have a shot and those who do not. And I know my research is very limited, but I do have a slide that I'd like to have put The slide says, Researchers say that vaccinated people may be even less likely to transmit COVID-19 than previously thought. And I think there's a second slide. No, I'm sorry if I didn't see it, but it says, no vaccinated people, no, vaccinated people are not just, are not just as infectious, as infectuous as unvaccinated people if they get COVID. So that's a question. Students, I'm concerned, I say no, because students and staff who have parents, grandparents, or live in intergenerational homes, not like in middle-class America, I've been in those homes, they're, if you COVID enters that house, it affects everyone. The death rate is at a high, all-time high for the elderly, because these kids go home to grandparents. I say no, because students or staff who live in a home that lacked the space to quarantine effectively, as I've said earlier. I say no, because students and staff who live in the above space also have the sole source of income. One of my friends had a person working in his yard, and he said, well, the school is open, he said, my kids are not going to school. And he said, why? Because if anyone in this house gets COVID, my entire income is affected. So I want you to know why I'm voting no. And the last reason is principals and administrators who have to navigate the privacy of non-vaccinated. So how do you tell a parent, well, your child is in the classroom, and this person is not vaccinated? You have a right to privacy, as you do, and I agree with you, but how do I navigate that as a principal? Who decides that who the non-vaccinated people are going to, a child is going to be exposed? What do we do with those kids who have medical conditions? On the front page of the Times, there are special education students who have immune conditions. So my rationale is very personal, and it's very, it's based on my belief in safety first. And I have said, and I know that members of this board have heard me say, I know Justin has heard me say this, winning for me, winning for me is not always numerical. So, excuse me, thank you. I appreciate you listening. Thank you. Winning for me is not always numerical. I know I may lose this vote, but I stood up for the safety of kids, and there's a majority of, you're talking about the teachers here who say they're going to quit. There are teachers in your schools who are saying they're going to leave because they have taken the shot. They have taken that shot. And they don't feel it's fair for us to give so much attention to the smaller group of people, which is about 5%. But I believe in the 5%. I believe that you have a right, but I just don't agree with you. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Luthe. I believe that tonight's discussion shows how hard these decisions are. For me, every vote weighs heavily on me. I've always prioritized student and staff safety, along with following the guidance of the CDC, the VDH, and the superintendent's team. Reviewing my history of voting and the intention behind each vote helps me reflect and also increase transparency. During the vote on September 15th, I stated that I voted against the resolution last spring, urging staff to get vaccinated for a variety of reasons. In spite of voting against the spring resolution, I stated that I supported and encouraged staff to receive their vaccinations. This vaccination resolution this past fall was not a mandate, and it took into consideration frequent concerns raised by Brentsville constituents regarding vaccinations. It also took into consideration the concerns of a number of elementary-age parents, including staff members whose children, at the time, could not be vaccinated. A few things have changed since this resolution was passed, as many of my fellow board members have stated. I know that some see the resolution of Prince William County School Board ensuring a safe learning and safe workplace in a place of concern, and I want to take a moment and empathize and explain where I'm coming from. The action on today's agenda is to suspend testing for a specific group of employees because of current trends of virus transmission. This action item was guided by up-to-date scientific data, as the environment has shifted from the initial resolution. It is to suspend within today's current guidelines and recommendations. This pandemic requires us to be fluid and flexible in government, and I would add, also parenting, instructing, and managing. When the school board passed the resolution ensuring safe learning and safe workplace, we were restarting our school system at 97% capacity without social distancing, while Delta was surging, and it was the dominant strand. Fast forward to today, including the statistics discussed about testing and staff being able to transmit the virus regardless of vaccination status, 93% of our staff is vaccinated. Please note, I am not against testing, but rather, with the current strand, we must reevaluate tactics. Nor am I against vaccinations. I've currently stated, and consistently, that I encourage staff to get vaccinated. I do appreciate what everyone said tonight. I believe in a productive discussions, and think we are better for it. But at this time, I cannot support continuing to test a specific group of employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, or Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. In my Facebook memories, I keep popping up every day of folks, and on our school board members, who volunteered in our pandemic team to do the vaccines last year, one year ago exactly. We started the vaccine program, teachers got to move to the front of the line, front of the queue, and we started vaccinating teachers at the end of January and all through February and March. And we were doing them over at Unity Reed High School, we were doing them over at Kelly Building, we were doing them at Novant UVA Hospital. And I was very proud of the effort we made. I was very excited we were able to get it done. Last March, I put on a resolution on this board to ask that the board consider that we highly recommend that all our staff and faculty get vaccinated. It was a resolution I worked with, with a number of members, and HR, superintendent, and pandemic team, thinking that this was a good idea. It's a great vaccine, let's get this to work, because my goal last year, and continues to be, is five-day in-person school. I've been extremely consistent about that. Voted to get special ed in early, before the vaccine, we did that, we got students in early before the vaccine, in October, November. I've been consistently consistent on that. And I lost the resolution to encourage staff to get vaccinated, five to three. I was stunned. I continue to be stunned by that vote, probably the most stunning vote I've been a part of in four years. Fast forward to September, we want to get schools open, we want them to stay open, we want to do everything possible. That included masking, which Dr. McDade asked the board to consider and do, and implement that program before the governor or VDH recommended we went ahead to do it, because our number-one goal has been to get kids in five days. That was the highest priority, to keep sports, extracurricular activities, everything going. And we did a great job throughout the fall, fantastic job. We voted on this resolution in September because we thought with Delta surging, this was the right thing. You heard all the reasons, I'm not going to repeat those reasons. And it made sense. But we never implemented the program because of testing kit shortages with our vendor and our own testing kit shortages. The program never actually got implemented until January 24th, which was the first time we asked teachers to submit who chose not to get vaccinated for weekly testing. We were able to navigate the entire fall without the program that we had voted on here in September. Times have changed, Omicron is on the downside of its huge peak, it continues to look like it will do that. We have unlayered mitigation at every point we could, from the minute we started the pandemic, whether it was getting kids in special ed, whether it was getting students in hybrid, whether it was getting a robust summer program rolling, whether it was getting five days in-person and getting rid of social distancing on the bus and to get things moving. We aren't one of those school districts that, you know, made kids sit outside to eat lunch, or when we, for the most part, said, you know, recess, gym classes, you know, whenever we could, we tried to relax some of those rules, and we've done that. The science, I have followed. The science has been controversial throughout. There have been, in my opinion, a general lack of support from the CDC on good science. I have not been shy to say that. I don't believe the VDH has been consistent, and I don't believe that the CDC has supported us the way we should be supported. There hasn't been talk about natural immunity. So we're up to 93%, was that Ms. Wall, on our faculty being vaccinated, but then there's another 6% who may not have disclosed, plus, many of those had had COVID, which provides natural immunity. And so as we look to what we're going to do and what we're changing, we have unlayered mitigation. We aren't flipping here. We are adjusting what we've done, and, you know, decisions that we made before, in 2020 hindsight, don't look like the best decisions, like the decision to not bring students back in, fall of 2020, full-blown, all-in, in my opinion, was my greatest failure, and continues to be my greatest failure. And my own children are paying for that failure, as are, I believe, students across this nation who couldn't get in sooner. And so I have been very consistent, you know, I believe very strongly in the work we've done as this board. We've looked at these matters, we've worked closely with Dr. McDade. Her number-one priority is to get kids in five days. I fully support that. That is what I'm here for. I will not risk a day, when we had to close Bennett Elementary, I nearly had a heart attack. Four days we lost of a whole school being shut down in the fall. That, we failed. We couldn't keep it open. There were classrooms shut here and there. Those were failures, but they were efforts at containing the virus and hopefully keeping people from getting sick. There is a lot of studies that show that, you know, if you're going to do a testing program with Omicron infecting those who've been vaccinated, it doesn't really make sense to just test those who haven't been vaccinated. Everyone's carrying it, and it's spreading all over. So, you know, the hospitals here in California, and actually here, some have said to the nurses and to physicians like me, if you're COVID-positive, you come in unless you're febrile. So we are changing. Healthcare settings are changing, CDC reduced isolation, quarantine guidance, we did that as well. So we're going to continue to adjust and change. It might not be, as I stated, fast enough for some, and it might be too fast for others. But I will support this resolution, because it is the right thing to do at this moment in time. Please, please, please. I'll just, I'll wrap up and say, you know, I'll support the resolution. I will ask Ms. Ralston, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
No.
Okay. At this point, we will call for the vote. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Ms. Ralston, did you say no? Okay, Ms. Ralston votes no.
So the vote is five yes, three no, Jesse, Ralston, and Williams. The motion passed.
Motion passes. Moving on to... Please. We're going to move on to revision of policy 102, 18.02. This is a first reading, Division Council, do you have anything to add, other than just noting that it's up for first reading, and for public comment, and for the board members to digest and send questions to you this week? Is that correct?
I have nothing other to add.
Thank you, Ms. Marshawn. Appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions about 1802? Ms. Williams?
I don't have any questions. I just want to note for the record that this is the same procedure we use anytime we adjust a policy, we do a first reading, and then we, at the second reading, take action. There hasn't been any change in that. It's the same policy this board has always done. So I just want to make sure that people who are new to watching school board meetings or policy adjustments are aware that there's been no change in procedure, this is normal for those who are just learning how policies are made with schools, from the school division. So this is standard. We have a first policy reading, then the second time around, it's for vote. So if members of the public have any concerns, you also have an opportunity to weigh in at that point as well.
Ms. Jesse, your light's on. Did you have anything to add? Okay. At that point, this point, without any further questions, we'll move on to 1803. Update on the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked for this to be put on the agenda, because every year, this board attends many conferences, especially with respect to Virginia School Board Association. This year, I had the pleasure of attending in person with a few of my board members. I know Ms. Wall was in attendance, Ms. Dargor was also in attendance, myself, Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Jesse, I believe, attended virtually, because it was a hybrid conference. The purpose of the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference is to provide school board members with information and education on current budgets, the current standard of the... standard of the budget in the state of Virginia, also to meet with our legislators. So we do that every year, specifically with Prince William County Schools. We meet with our legislators and share our legislative priorities, which we vote on annually. The members who were in attendance in person were able to meet with the majority of our representative delegation, which is also kind of rare because legislators are in session at the time, so it can be hit or miss. I can say overall, it was a good visit. We were able, as I said, to meet with the majority of our legislators and share our legislative priorities and discuss upcoming and pending legislation that was going to be addressed at the General Assembly. There's also an opportunity for board members to take courses or to attend a training session. This year, they did one on collective bargaining. There's always one on FOIA and new school board members and new superintendents. I am very proud to say that our own superintendent, who is new to the division, participated in the new superintendent training. In the past, our superintendent has attended this conference with us, so it's nice to see that tradition continue. It's also an opportunity for our superintendent to meet with our legislators as well because our legislative session here in Virginia is very short, quick, and you don't always get an opportunity outside of our legislative breakfast to interact with them, especially in person. So I highly encourage, if people are not familiar with Prince William County Schools' legislative priorities, they are available for the public to review. So I think that's pretty much all I have, but I put this on the agenda also in case anybody else who was in attendance would like to share another perspective.
We'll move on next to... Okay, so we're going to have to, we need to reconvene closed sessions. We need to reenter closed session. A motion is in order.
Point of order? We have soft point matters.
Do we do that afterwards, or you want to do that now?
Right now.
Oh, I see. Okay, yeah, sure. Go ahead. Do Board Matters. We'll start with Ms. Jessie.
Actually, I wanted to just share with you that I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting when the Racial and Social Justice Committee made its presentation. And I know that Mrs. Williams said this, but I wanted to make this explicit that there were many questions from the Board of Supervisors that related to data and how our schools were performing. And I think Ms. Williams tried to say it in so many ways, but I want to be explicit that we have a partnership with them, but we have the sole responsibility of implementing practices. And that my recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is to look at the superintendent's strategic plan. All the questions that were asked are there and that they will be working with the Equity Advisory Council, I think also, that they'll be working with you guys also. But just, it became very obvious to me that there was some confusion about their role and that they were asking questions about data that, to me, were a little bit too specific. And really, to be honest with you, they were questioning our ability to do our job in my observation. So I just, I just want to say to anyone that if you read the strategic plan or the superintendent, you will find the answer to all of your questions. And tonight, we had this quarterly presentation of data, which we've never, have never had. So there's data here, but I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is our last meeting for February, so I'm going to continue what I started at the first meeting when recognizing Black History Month in Prince William County. I would like to acknowledge, as last time I did with the school division, our county-level own Black history makers, and that would be the first elected Black supervisors to the Prince William County Board of Supervisors. The first on the board was Victor Angry, and that has been followed by supervisor, my own supervisor, Woodbridge District Supervisor Angela Franklin, along with Kenny Bodie and Andrea Bailey. I think it's important that our public and our students recognize that we have our own living Black history right here in Prince William County, considering it's Black History Month. In addition to that, I just want to also say that I had the opportunity to attend Potomac Shores Middle School. They invited me to judge a art contest, which I know Mr. Wilk will fill you in in greater detail later, but I did promise to show some artwork. Mr. Wilk brought it, so I stole it from him because this was one of my favorite pieces from the art competition. It appears to be done in pencil, in colored pencil, and it's just simply amazing. There's more artwork to follow. I appreciated the invite. I try my best to attend schools when invited. I don't like to do any surprises. And that was really an awesome opportunity. I liked how they did the judging using QR codes. And there were also students who participated in the displaying artwork that was not part of the contest. So I think that that was a very inclusive contest. I'd like to say congratulations to Potomac High School Boys Basketball Team for winning a playoff game. But I'd also like to acknowledge Freedom High School for making it to the playoffs. I myself am guilty and slightly biased. We spend a lot of time talking about Potomac Boys Basketball. Traditionally, they have been wonderful, but I don't want any of our Freedom students to think that their effort was not recognized because it was, and I'm very proud of them as their representative. As Ms. Jessie alluded to, the Racial and Social Justice Commission presented their report to the Board of County Supervisors. The school division does sit in partnership with that. It was interesting to see other commissioners here tonight in their apparel. We did have our report accepted. The next meeting will be in March of 2022. In addition to that, the Governor's School will have its next meeting tomorrow. That meeting will be held virtually. We will receive updates on our Governor's School students. And then lastly, I just want to reiterate again that while this board has undergone many changes, majority of our operational procedure changes have not changed in years despite what we hear from the public. We have been consistent in the way that we address policy and operate. And I also like to bring recognition to something we don't talk about in regards to mental health, and that is that we are in a pandemic. But along with that two-year pandemic, we also lived through the largest sustained racial and social protest in American history. And that's important to recognize, the trauma that our Black and Brown students, well, any student really affected by that, has endured. And we don't honor or talk about that enough, and I think it's high time that we recognize all trauma that we lived through through the pandemic. So thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to teachers and parents, thank you for advocacy on the behalf of a group of teachers who very much appreciate your letters and your support and the freedom to choose. Thank you to B. Simpson and Brandy Reeves. You keep us going. You guys are awesome. You help us keep us organized and do so much more that we are probably not aware of. I want to highlight one of our very own students who will be participating in the Olympic Games for USA's sled hockey team, Evan Nichols, who is a senior at Battlefield. This will be Evan's first time competing on international ice with the national team. So Evan, we wish you great success and go Team USA. They will be competing March 4th through 14th on, he will be competing with the US Paralympic Sled Hockey Team, and it will be March 4th through 14th. So I hope we can all tune in and watch. I also want to congratulate Battlefield Girls and Boys Swim Teams. Battlefield Girls were the Virginia Region 6B champs, and the boys came in third in the region, so that was really awesome. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm just not happy with how we have been interacting with the public. One final note about the group of citizens gathered here tonight and many, many who showed up and were not allowed in the room or who were not allowed to participate in this meeting presently. I know it was hotly contested issues, a lot of tension, a lot of, you know, emotion on the sides of this. But I do want to say that I, we represent the public, and the public does have a right to participate in our meetings. You are welcome. Appreciate it so very much. I would like to see us return back to more of how it was before, where we had people in here and we kind of sat in a normal way. I think we've got to start thinking about that. I'm not happy with how the public is perceiving our procedures. I also would like to see a change in quarantine rules. I know this is something a lot of people feel strongly about. I believe that this is, there will be changes at the state level, and I hope that we move forward with that. Last year, I consistently pushed for children to be live in person, learning through a series of votes, and I've argued consistently for parents to have the right to opt their children out of mask policies, I mean, out of mask mandates. I do feel like we need the opportunity as a local school board, and that is our right to balance the costs versus the benefits, and we need to have discussions about that. Finally, with the immediate effective date of the new state bill, 739, I wish to say a few words. First of all, I hope we do not insist on irrational mitigations like Plexiglas and face shields that have no basis in science, nor that we exclude or marginalize children from full participation in classrooms or any other mitigation efforts that make them feel ashamed to exercise their rights under the law. I recognize that some people will be uncomfortable, very uncomfortable, with today's change in the mask policy. It is a tenet of many faiths, mine included, that the spirit of contention is not of God. The coming weeks will provide us all with a good opportunity to practice tolerance and respect for others' choices, whatever they may be, and practice not judging others as we exercise grace. So I think as we move forward, we need to recognize the need for adjustments with the goal towards normalizing normal, and eventually, this will end, and we will all return to our normal lives and fight about normal things like boundaries and school names. And, you know, we recognize that we work for the people and we represent the people. That's our job. And so as we peel back a layer of mitigation, I say partway because I fully expect that there will be many students who will choose to wear a mask, which is their right, and those who choose not to, which is also their right. I urge that we remember the slogan that was coined in 1939 by our neighbors across the pond, "Be calm," or "Keep calm and carry on." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go to Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So I'm going to try to be short tonight. I was in a training this week on community and family engagement for my teaching job, and I was surprised, no one here knows this right now, I was surprised that they mentioned Prince William County as an example of some of the things that we do very well. They mentioned the parent camps and specifically an interview with Dr. Cologne. So I wanted to say congratulations on setting those great examples. And in the vein of parent and community engagement, I want to just remind you all that we have advisory councils, PTO, PTA, booster parents. You guys rock. I mean, if you're sports boosters, music boosters, cheerleaders, I mean, that's sports too, right? I mean, just everything. We need our volunteers. We need our families involved. So just, and just remember that it is a community effort. It's all of us. I want to remind our students that there are many scholarship opportunities that have come up. Spark Foundation here with Prince William County, let me pull that up again. That was poweredbyspark.org has a whole bunch of scholarships available that you can apply for. Peyton's Place, which is a really important organization that's doing great work here in the county, also has scholarships available. So seniors, please take a look at those things. I went to see a couple basketball games. I went to hear the District Nine chorus, both the middle school and the high school and the District Nine band last weekend, or the weekend before. You guys, I was the one sobbing in the back. It was so beautiful. The middle school chorus sang a song called "Clouds," and it was just absolutely stunningly beautiful. And then I went over to Woodbridge High School to hear the senior group sing, and it just was really great to hear all of this beautiful music. So I just want to remind people that we are inching our way toward more, back into more normal. I'm looking forward to continuing working here for our students in our community. And the last thing I want to mention is there have been a flurry of communications to the board, and sometimes when we receive the communications, you have emailed all of us. We don't always know if you are our constituent. And I like to make sure I respond to mine, but sometimes I can't tell if you don't say whether you're not, whether or not you're in one of my schools or you live in the district. That would be helpful. I think all of us would like that. I do respond to other people, but I don't want to step on other board members' toes either. So when you are communicating with us, just if you could let us know which magisterial district you're in, that would be helpful. And as always, everyone stay safe and have a good week.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. Been a busy two weeks since our last board meeting. Basketball's been mentioned a lot, but we are at regionals. And, you know, my first start, the session, I went to Potomac Boys. They defeated the Woodbridge Boys Basketball Team in overtime, which was a great game. The students rushed the court. It was a lot of fun. And I want to recognize former Potomac grad Keith Honore coached and won his three, excuse me, he won his 300th game during this time, the Potomac Boys varsity coach, and his son is a senior on the team right now. Did have a chance to visit Patty Elementary, visited students, participated in a student restaurant theme going on, fun times in a kindergarten alphabet game. Went to Montclair Elementary, of course, made my rounds, visited PE, the Music Room, an autism classroom, visited Henderson Elementary, visited all grade levels, including music and the PE. I went to Forest Park, hung out with the A Street Bruins, which is an outstanding program, an inclusion program that they do at Forest Park. I also saw the Unified Team. They're doing some great things, and I had the opportunity to taste some cupcakes in a cupcake competition. Went to Covington Harper, visited all grade levels, including the Art Room, did a doodle and a sketch, and then also watched the kids play with ukuleles in the Music Room. Went to Dumfries Elementary, and they had a great welcome for me and a nice sign, "Thank you." They're very pleased that this budget includes things like a community liaison, additional funding for a small school, and a full-time ITC, which they have not had. I wrapped up that day by visiting Swans Creek, which is my neighborhood school right down the road, and was there for about an hour. As Ms. Williams said, I did kind of surprise visit and steal her thunder a little bit because she was already judging, but I, of course, popped in yesterday, and there were some cool ones. I like this one. It outlines kindness and it shows, it's actually the planets. It's really nice. Then, you know, it's always nice to hear kindness is magic, whatever. And be kind, that's always nice. And don't be a bully, be a friend. And then, of course, this is the one that Ms. Williams held up. She liked this one, so. Anyways, so it was great to be over there. And then finally, as Ms. Williams mentioned, last night, the Potomac Boys had a regional game and they defeated Victory. This has not been an easy year for Potomac. It's not a normal year. They are not like the completely undefeated given regional champs. So I appreciate the perseverance, and there is a game tomorrow that I will be at. I do want to obviously thank my wife. A lot of people say, "How do you do all this? Why does she let you out all the time?" And she's very accommodating. She knows this is what I love to do and be in schools and be at events, so I do want to thank her. And I want to wish my mom a happy 65th birthday. During my call today, it was more about my stress and my fun than unfortunately talking to her, but my mom's a former elementary PE teacher, and just wanted to wish mom a happy birthday. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Ralston? Ms. Ralston, do you want, do you have Board Matters?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ralston. All right, I'll go. Since the last board meeting, I was able to attend 101 Dalmatians at Cedar Point Elementary. I love supporting student-centered activities and events, and this was another great performance. I just want to echo on what Ms. Zargarpur said about emails. Please be patient as we navigate emails. We go through periods when they increase volume, and I really do appreciate your grace. And I want to reiterate that every vote I cast weighs heavily on my mind. Thank you to those who came and spoke on the budget today. Please continue to read the budget and email us questions. Thank you to all those who came today and have emailed us, and also thank you for highlighting the aviation maintenance program today. This week is kindness week. I want to reiterate what I said last week about encouraging our leaders today to lead with love and acceptance to create unity in conversations. Let us show our true intent and model kindness. Today, we were fortunate to talk to Patriot High School students before the meeting, who have prioritized kindness. Throughout this week, Alexis Francis, Brea DeFave, Zoe Carburn, and Olivia Carburn, and I'm really sorry if I missed... and I'm really sorry if I mispronounce people's last names, were a member of a student leadership group from Patriot. And today, they spoke of their efforts to spread kindness throughout our community, because, as they said, everyone deserves kindness. They spent the week visiting elementary schools, passing kind notes. They're going to decorate rocks and spread it throughout the community. So, if you see a decorated rock, please tag hashtag Patriot RFK. They're going to deliver flowers throughout their school while donating to the American Heart Association, and then they're going to collect canned goods, all in the name of kindness. These kind high schoolers brought a gift for all of the board members today. First, there are calendars by Joe Cahill of Patriot Sports, and then, we also have t-shirts made by Patriot high schoolers. So, they're asking that the board members wear them while they do something kind, and please consider tagging Patriot RFK while you wear it. And again, I just want to say that it was just really kind that they came down at a moment of their time and came to talk with us, and I hope everybody enjoys the gift from Patriot High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. All right, I'll be brief. Congratulations to all our amazing basketball teams who made districts and who've had terrific seasons, and there's too many of them to name, so I'm not going to name them, because if I name them, I'll forget some, but they have done an outstanding job. Congratulations, all our coaches. Particularly Sherman Rivers had a big historic win over their Patriot. I think it was his 100th or 500th, 500th win? Anybody know? It was a big win, but, or 200th. But anyways, congratulations, they've done a great job. Continue to congratulate all of our students who are continuing to work hard, our seniors as they continue to march towards college, and they're hearing about their admissions. Good luck, best wishes. Our juniors start getting ready for that work. Lot of work ahead for that, but it's fun, exciting stuff. And with that, I really, you know, I want to thank Dr. McDade for the report on the second quarter grades. That, again, continues to be my number-one concern, is our performance, and that's my number two, three, four, five, and sixth, and seventh, and eighth, and ninth, 10th concerns as well, is our academic performance by our students. So, we'll continue to monitor that and move forward. At this time, we need to go back into closed session, so I will ask Ms. Jackson to read us back into closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enters closed session for the following reasons. One, to consult with Division Council and receive advice on legal matters requiring the advice of Council and/or pertaining to actual or probable litigation as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 7, and 8. And two, to consult with Division, excuse me, to consult with, to consult with staff and Division Council regarding legal requirements specific to the pandemic, which require legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A and 8.
Have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zargarpur. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Ms. Ralston, vote yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
The board will reconvene in the closed session room at 10:25. Please take, okay, we're back. Motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Don't we, we have to certify again?
Right. 20.01 is my session.
So, certify 20.01, if you go and read 20.01.
One second, while I...
Hers is not right for some reason, but I can read it.
Thank you. I just did.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of February 16, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters that were identified, such business matters as were identified in the motion convening, the closed meeting, were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Moving on to the approval for the directive to Division Council.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
21.01. Ms. Jackson?
I move that the Prince William County School Board direct Division Council to take such actions as discussed in closed session.
Have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
Second.
Please vote, or any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, one no, Wall, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
At this point, the Prince William County School Board will be adjourned.